Call to order the meeting of April 8th. You all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Spanish translation tonight.
Yes, we do. We have Vivian Rodriguez. Vivian, would you please introduce yourself?
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias. We have headsets for the hearing impaired. That's usually noted on our screen. Maybe later we'll get that up on our screen. If anyone you know needs the headsets, let us know. Announcements of closed session items. We had a vote on the Casey waiver for graduation for students with disabilities consideration. The motion was made by Harder, second by Cordaro. It was passed 4-0 with Bob Noel absent. Acceptance of donations. Move to accept with appreciation. Second. There are maybe four pages of donations. It's quite a list. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? C6: introductions, proclamations, presentations, recognitions.
We do have two brief presentations. You may have noticed the Waterford van outside. I'm pleased to introduce Ed Martin and John Cooy of California Concern. California Concern is a group of local citizens who work on projects intended to make a positive difference in our community. I met with California Concern a couple of years ago. I described some of the challenges in the district, including English learners entering kindergarten without prior learning and prior experience, prior learning in English. They went into action, and it's been quite an action. After meeting with our child development administrators and learning about the Waterford Language Development Program, Ed and John came up with the idea of the Mobile Waterford Van. Classroom on Wheels is a way to provide English language and learning readiness to Spanish-speaking four-year-old children in the community. John Cooy is a retired professor from Duke University who is nationally known for his work on at-risk youth. He's doing research on the Mobile Waterford Project. Great opportunity, isn't it, John? And Ed Martin is a retired attorney, and it's a winning combination. And for those of you in the audience, the van will be outside for a little while yet. I hope you all have a chance to poke your heads inside and see what it's all about. John?
Thank you. I didn't expect such a large audience for my talk, but I did play the bass horn in high school, okay, just in case. Just one note, I'm with you. Anyway, members of the board, I know you know something about this project, but I thought what I would do is give you a very brief overview of how it came about, what it is, and where we see it going, and then we can open up for questions, but I hope only to take a few minutes. Dr. Sarvis has explained something about his challenge to us when he met with us, that there were such a large number of children entering kindergarten each year. He talked about 43 percent, which, doing the math, comes out to be somewhere between 350 and 400 children who enter kindergarten every year without being able to speak English. And I've been looking at some of the language survey forms, and it's quite surprising, the number of kids that whose parents say the children speak no English. So, we worked off the Waterford program, which Cleveland School had found to be quite successful in improving the English of kids who did not speak English but simply logged on to the computer maybe about once a month over the year. So, Ed actually had the ingenious idea when we talked about how do we use Waterford, because you couldn't bring that many kids into the school to get access to the computer. He said, "We'll bring it to the kids." And that's where the idea of the mobile van came in. So, the van has eight computer stations on which the Waterford program is uploaded, and it goes into neighborhoods and some Head Start locations. And we are currently serving, I think, probably around 87 or 88 kids, which is the maximum capacity for that van. The van goes in, we have 20-minute stops, eight kids come on, they work on the computer for 20 minutes every day of the week. It gives them, and this will go on for the entire school year until they register for kindergarten in September. So, we think we're going to see really quite remarkable results. Already, we've done some evaluation. We tested the kids on the Oral J program, which is the program that kids get multiply tested on during the kindergarten year as an assessment of where they are with reading skills, but also it's given in English, so you can't pass the test unless you can comprehend English. And Zoe, who's the classroom teacher, gave that to the kids who were in the Spanish-speaking Head Start programs. There were about 38 of those kids. And then I compared their scores. These are scores that were taken at the end of two months of the program only, and I compared their scores to kids who are currently in kindergarten but were at those same Head Start schools last year and looked at the Oral J scores. The kids who've had two months in this program have statistically significantly better scores on the Oral J than the kids who are actually older at the time they took the test. We're going to do the test again in May because some of the foundations that are funding us want to really see where we are with evidence that we're making a difference. And then, of course, when these children enter kindergarten, they'll take the test in the standard way. Now, if you figure we've got statistically significant differences in two months, given another six to seven months on the program, I think we're going to see some really dramatic differences. But we also want to explore really how they're doing in terms of practical English every day. And one of the things I should say is that although Zoe and Eric, who were doing the program with the kids, started off in Spanish in order to teach the kids how to use the computer and the program, the instruction is all now in English, and the kids are functioning quite well. And so, we're going to begin supplementing with some other kinds of activities. The question, where do we go from here now? We're at full capacity. If the challenge is to meet the prospect of there being something like, let's say, 350 kids, we've got a long way to go from 85 to 350. We've been working with agents, a number of agencies Eric and I have, in order to build a kind of cooperative network for referring kids to us, because what we want to do is find the kids who are out there in homes where parents aren't really venturing very far and they're not accessing programs, and those are the kids that we're going after. And it looks like we're going to be successful in doing that. So, we are applying for funds right now to fund another van, some more staff, so we will have two vans next year and be able to accommodate 170 children. Long range, we really want to see how these kids are doing in school. We want to look at not just Oral J scores, but we want to see standard achievement measures. And one of the other things we're going to be interested in long-term is what difference does this make in terms of attendance for these children? Are they coming to school more often? Are they not dropping out of school by middle school de facto in the way the other kids are? And if this is true, this is going to bring a rather large financial return to the school system, which I think is really very important. I don't want to say any more about it than that. But let me take questions from the board, if you have some.
I have one. You said 87 students. Is that, how often do they use the van?
They, we have a stop that goes to the same place every day of the week. So, every day of the week, they get 20 minutes.
Wow.
So, this is a very intensive exposure. 20 minutes is really about maximum. In some of the stops, we've got it down to 15 minutes in order to squeeze in an extra stop during the day.
I just want to say thank you so much. I mean, it's amazing what you're doing. I'm sure all the board members feel the same way. I'm sort of imagining you luring them out with maybe ice cream truck music. I don't know how you found them in the first place, but it's wonderful for you to be doing this.
Yeah, we actually thought about doing that. It turns out, you can't keep them away. They are so eager to get to their computer, because if you watch them when they're working with it, some of these kids are saying, "Wow, I got it," you know, because they're getting feedback. That's the beauty of the program. It's paced at their level, and if they don't move forward, it just keeps them there until they get it, so they experience success. And we see this as really one of the big positives for when these kids enter kindergarten. Not only will they understand what's going on in the classroom and be able to understand teacher's instructions, in a way, they'll have one-up on a lot of the kids in the class because they'll have some early reading readiness skills, they'll know Waterford when they get onto it, and they will have had this history of positive success in a school-like setting, which those of you who have been teachers know is a really critical factor. So, we're excited about it. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much, and I want to direct something to Dr. Sarvis. This sounds like a conversation with the city of Santa Barbara that somehow the bookmobile can't link up with our Waterford van at certain stops or certain days of the week.
Good.
Ms. Cordaro?
Well, I just wanted to also extend my thanks. I met with you when you were starting out, and I'm really excited about the success that you've had with being able to find the students and get the students out to participate in this program. And having just walked through it, it is no doubt that the students are anxious to get in there and probably perceive it as quite an exciting and fun opportunity to come into their neighborhood. So, again, thank you.
Yeah, and I want to say again that Zoe and Eric have been very important to the success of this program and the recruitment and getting kids enthusiastic about it.
There's Eric.
And the other thing I want to say is that we've been working with Susan and Jenny of the Child Development Program, and I can't say, we couldn't have better partners than the two of them. They've been splendid in getting this thing going, so you should be proud of them. Okay.
One more thing. Yes, go ahead.
Do we have site-based, Waterford, site-based?
Had a number of sites.
At five of our sites. Cleveland, Franklin, McKinley, Harding, and Adams.
Okay. And we've had it for how long?
Well, Cleveland has had it for quite a while. I want to say maybe four years, because the first third-grade class went through. It started slow. The last site to implement was Franklin, and Adams was the beginning of this year, Franklin mid-year. Harding and McKinley were full on board last year.
Did they have this at Buellapain School when we were there?
Yes, they did.
The Englewood Schools had great success. I don't know whether you're familiar with that, but back in, way back into the '90s, late '90s, they were trying this program and having enormous success, which really corroborates your experience.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'm also pleased that we have with us tonight from San Marcos High School our vocal music instructor Carolyn Terreauka Brady. There you are, Carolyn. And Carolyn is here to share some great news about the Madrigal Singers and Enchante.
Right. I just wanted, you don't want to hear me talk, and I won't take up your time, but in this month of March, we've been to Carnegie Hall, and my girls have been to Notre Dame Cathedral in Paris and London. So, they have a lot of things to tell you, and I have some parents. It'll be very brief.
Good evening. My name is Landon Rank. I'm a senior at San Marcos, and I'm the vice president of the Madrigal Choir. And I just want to let everyone know, on March 10th, we went to Carnegie Hall and sang the Brahms' German Requiem. It's about a 90-minute piece in all German with 150 other students from states, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and North Carolina, under the conductor Craig Jessup of the Mormon Tabernacle Choir and the St. Luke's Orchestra. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the school board and everyone who's allowed us to go on this trip, allowed us to take this wonderful opportunity, just to get to know other people from completely different worlds than ours and to be able to come together in this sort of bonding experience of music in a way that has, you know, built lasting friendships within our group as well as across the country. It was just a very unique experience, and I'm very grateful.
Hi, my name's Kristy Hep. I'm a junior at San Marcos, and I'm in the Madrigal Choir. And for me, I've always dreamed of, you know, doing something great with music. And when we got the opportunity to perform at Carnegie Hall a month ago, it was absolutely unbelievable to be a part of something so unique and so incredible. And just stepping into Carnegie Hall and singing on the stage was just breathtaking. It was unlike anything else I've ever done. And I started singing in elementary school, and the dedication that I've learned through the arts and the inspiration I've gotten from the teachers that I've had in music has taught me lessons about passion, about dedication, you know, working hard to achieve something you never thought possible, like performing at Carnegie Hall. And I've learned so much about music and people and working hard to achieve your dreams and your goals and everything. I just want to thank you so much for all the opportunities I've had, you know, over half of my life in music in school. So, thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Kristen Share. I'm a senior, and I'm also in the Madrigals. When we were rehearsing at Carnegie Hall one day, the Carnegie Hall historian came and talked to us a little bit about Carnegie Hall. And the, how many people have performed at Carnegie Hall is truly incredible. I mean, Tchaikovsky performed there, Frank Sinatra, Ella Fitzgerald, Led Zeppelin. It's such a huge, it's like, if you think of any of your favorite performers, chances are they've done something at Carnegie Hall. And that, I don't even know if I really understand that entirely yet. I know it's something that I'll continue to learn for the rest of my life. I met a couple at Kinko's when I was copying some stuff that I would need for homework before the trip, and I kind of said, "Oh, yeah, I'm copying this because I'm going to miss school because we're going to go to Carnegie Hall." And they were just, "Whoa, Carnegie Hall? Are you kidding me?" And when we got to Carnegie Hall and you see the poster, the famous Carnegie Hall poster sitting, posted up on the wall of Carnegie Hall, when I saw that we had playbills with the little orange or the little yellow rectangle that said "Playbill" in black letters that you get when you go to a Broadway show, my name's in a playbill. That is something that I know I will continue to think of and continue to realize more and more what an incredible opportunity this is for the rest of my life as I meet new people and have new experiences. I'm not planning on majoring in music, but I'm going to go and major in engineering next year. But I'll always have that music side of me. I'll always have that experience of Carnegie Hall. So, I'd really like to thank you guys for allowing us to have this truly unbelievable experience. So, thank you.
Hello. My name's Hojier Salers. I'm also a senior at San Marcos and in the Madrigals. And I've been blessed to perform twice now at Carnegie Hall, once with the San Marcos Band, and Mr. Sarvis and Dr. Noel were both there, and also now with the Madrigals. And up until this past year, I had never really considered going into a job with music. Music is a job. I had always considered business, maybe law. But with Ms. TB and the Madrigals and the community it's created and everything I've learned, I've decided that next year I'll be attending a music school, a conservatory in New York. And so, I just wanted to thank you all for the experience that you've allowed me to have through band and choir.
Hi, my name's Chelsea Chavez. I'm a senior, also in Madrigals. And I would, again, like to thank you so much for all these incredible experiences that I've been able to have. I didn't start singing until seventh grade, when a friend decided to make me go to the auditions for choir. And I made it, and from there, I went into outburst, and then I just knew, it's like, a music just becomes a part of you once you start. And I just knew that, like, I could never go on without not singing. And then, when I was in Carnegie Hall, singing on that stage, looking at all of those people staring back at me, it was the best feeling in the world, and being on stage is something that you can't describe. And it just really clicked in me that I know that I have to keep performing because it's so wonderful, and I met so many great people, and I've learned to communicate better and have, I have so much self-confidence than I did before. And I just want to thank you for all the great experiences that I've been able to have. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Gary Fields. I'm a junior at San Marcos High School with the Madrigal Singers. And stepping onto the Carnegie Hall stage was one of the most amazing moments of my life. Looking out at the audience, not just out at the audience, up at the audience, all the way up there. It was completely breathtaking, without a doubt, a once-in-a-lifetime event, standing there, singing, knowing I have something in common with Tchaikovsky and Frank Sinatra, Led Zeppelin. It was truly remarkable, and thank you so much for letting this become a reality. Because last year, when Ms. TB told us about it, I thought to myself, "That sounds really cool, but it might not happen, and that worries me." So, thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Tamara Erickson. And in the awkward and often lonely elementary school years, my daughter was fortunate to go to a school in Santa Barbara School District that valued music education in elementary school. And as a result, she found a friend in music and also made a lot of friends through music. And fast forward 10 years, and she is now, was one of the students who went with Enchante, the other choir, to Paris and London and got back last week. And the description and the look on her face when she told us about the experience of singing in Notre Dame Cathedral and listening to her voice and the voices of her choir bounce around these beautiful historic places, and the experience for me of getting on their website from home and seeing San Marcos Choir on their calendar is something that we will never forget. So, we want to thank you not only for the support through the elementary and junior high years, which made all of this possible, but for giving them the ability to go on this amazing trip. So, thank you.
Dr. Malinoff, members of the board, and Dr. Sarvis. My name is Jeff Young, and I'm a lucky parent of a San Marcos High School Madrigal. I've been fortunate to have been a chaperone on our school's recent trips to New York City this past month and two years ago, when our students performed at the Festival of Gold at the Riverside Church along the Upper West Side of Manhattan. I really want to thank you for your tremendous, for the tremendous experiences I have had as a result of your support of our music programs. I have enjoyed being a part of our students' trips, helping Mrs. TB, and most importantly, to have been a witness to the splendid performances our students have put on. While Gary Fields was talking about performing and looking up at Carnegie Hall, I was in the first row of elevated seats, looking down at both Dr. Jessup and the whole stage. I was in one of the first seats, and it was just a remarkable experience. It took me about three weeks to recover emotionally from the impact of being in that venue. It really was something. At the Festival of Gold, our students took first place in each of their respective categories out of scores of competing choirs around the country. The Madrigals' performance at Carnegie Hall was something I will never forget. After three full days of rehearsal with the three other high school choirs, our students were onstage at Carnegie Hall with all of its gold leaf paint inside and the red velvet trimmings that are just throughout. And with all of that history, it really is something. It really was a sight to behold. For our students to have been accepted to perform at this truly pinnacle of musical venues is quite an accomplishment. Through the time I have spent watching my daughter and her other students perform, I have fully realized the importance of music to our well-being. Music does not just make the individual happy and well-grounded. Music is the universal language of mankind that transcends politics, religions, cultures, and the other differences we have been so good at creating to advance or protect our own interests. Music needs no introduction, and it needs no explanation. It is felt by the heart and soul instantly, and for this reason, I believe it is our best vehicle for bringing mankind together. God only knows, we need that now more than ever. I can tell you that my daughter's appreciation and love for music has only deepened as a result of her experience on both these last two trips. And I want to thank you for your past and anticipated continued support for our music programs in our local schools. Thank you.
I'm Laura Erickson. I'm a mom, also of two San Marcos Madrigals, and I was also a chaperone in New York City. And thank you so much for allowing them the opportunity to go to New York City. The Carnegie performance was amazing, but what was more amazing was watching Craig Jessup, a world-class choral director, working with these kids, five days of rehearsal. They worked so hard. It's all in the details. The German pronunciation, I mean, everything. I've never seen, they were exhausted. I was exhausted watching. It was just, he's just, Craig Jessup was just an amazing individual. And I just don't think that without our feeder programs in elementary and junior high, that our kids would have been selected for this high-level competition. So, I just want to ask you to continue supporting the arts, all arts, in the high school. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this time. I've learned a lot. This is the kind of year for a teacher personally. Don't listen, Dr. Chris. But going to Carnegie Hall and also taking a group to Notre Dame and Paris, it's the kind of year a teacher would retire on, a music teacher. However, not so for me, because I've learned a lot from my students, that not only could I set, could we have the bar set at such a high level to take on college-level music in German and perform it with the orchestra under 10-hour-day rehearsals. They just withstood all the pain and elevated all their cognitive skills, their adaptability, their ability to understand and communicate, whether they were in Paris speaking, singing in English to a Paris audience. I could see in the girls' faces that they took so much joy from being able to communicate text, get the feeling across. There was so much diversity and culture and high-level cognitive skills going on on our spring tours this year, that I've just learned that we need to continue. Every level of music, we, I'm lucky, I'm at the top end of high school, but I know and you know that we need everybody to help encourage all these kids to have these great experiences. These students, they didn't say, but they're National Merit Scholars, they're full ride to SC. They're excellent students in lots of different ways, not just music. But we have other students, all sorts of students, that benefit from all the different experiences that music can bring. And it really brings the humanity to who we are, as Mr. Young had said. So, thank you all of you so much for the opportunity.
Yes.
I wanted to thank you on behalf of the board members, because you did invite us to come listen when Craig Jessup was here practicing. And I know at least Mrs. Harder and I took advantage, and maybe others did as well. It was so beautiful that, for me, I couldn't even turn my car radio on when I left because I didn't want the vocal memory to leave. It was gorgeous, and so I can only imagine, after five more days of training and being in Carnegie Hall, what that was like. I was so impressed with your students and your class. It was amazing.
Thank you, because they truly are just, they were amazing. They brought a lot to the table in New York, and you can certainly be proud of Santa Barbara with the other schools. It was great. Thank you.
I know we have other items to get to. Let me tell you first that San Barbara Community Academy grades K through 6, returning from intercession, are finally all together at the Lacumbra site. The K3 youngsters and their parents were warmly welcomed, and the little ones went through a campus orientation. I understand we're already working on a restroom schedule for the campus. I'd like to thank Dave Hetjung and particularly project manager Carl Mayrose for all of their work in coordinating the work of contractors on this project. And before I move to the next item, I also want to congratulate Amy Alzina, the principal at the Community Academy. Son Jack came into the world on February 23rd, and Amy was back on the job two weeks later, always on the run. That's our Amy. Well, we just received the state list of career technical education Prop 1D bond fundings, funding items, and the board will be happy to know that both the MAD Academy and the Santa Barbara High School Kitchen are on the list. So, we'll get you more information on that shortly. The Board Brief, my office issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on the district. It's available in the reception area. Among other things included in the district. It's available in the reception area. Among other things included in the last Board Brief were a report on mission statements from various school districts. I'm sure you'll find that very interesting. A report on the elementary district's corrective action for program improvement in year three, and an estimate of the cost of Spanish translation for Board Meeting of Education translations in Spanish, and more importantly, probably the lack of availability in airing time, which is probably a bigger problem. Coming up in the days ahead, and we have copies of this schedule on the back table, Santa Barbara High School screening of the 30-minute film Dawn Riders, April 13 in the cafeteria. "Dawns with Flava," performance at 3:00 PM and a film screening at 3:30 PM. Next, we have Santa Barbara County Science Fair for students in grades 7 through 12 on Friday, April 18 at the Corwin Pavilion at UC Santa Barbara. San Marcos High School will have their spring musical Damn Yankees, May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and 8th, 9th, and 10th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And La Colina Junior High School Advanced Concert Band Jazz Band and Drum Line Spring Concert, May 15, 7:00 PM at La Colina Auditorium. And that's it for tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a student report tonight?
I believe we do have Bria Little here. Bria, where are you?
Oh.
How about Alex Fedlow? I thought Bria was here.
I'm coming at 7.
They may be coming at 7.
We usually start at 7s. They may, we'll have to hear from them later.
We'll be on the lookout for them and see if we can intercept them then. Thank you.
Now, we have public comments. These are items not on the agenda.
We have Joan Stuster.
Hi, my name is Joan Stuster and I also am a parent of an Enchanté student. And I wanted to come tonight and also say thank you. Our family recently returned from a wonderful trip to London and Paris where we had an opportunity to hear our daughter perform with the San Marcos High School Enchanté Chorus. I want to thank the board for approving this experience for the music students, but I also want to publicly thank their teacher for her knowledge, her experience, and her understanding of the importance of such arts experiences for her students. I want to thank the parents who assisted with the accounting, handling the complicated financial matters through all of these long months of fundraising. And finally, thanks go to the chaperones. As my family enjoyed being a member of the audience in such amazing venues at these performances, the chaperones were busy filming, always smiling, and as my daughter reports, always wonderful and supportive with the girls. Such experiences take a great deal of planning, organization, and parent support, and are not only good for the students, but also in building community with our families. You all have children, so you understand how difficult it is for a little sister to impress an older brother. But as we enjoy taking the sights of the cities, my son kept asking me, "Is Juliet really performing here?" And I would say yes. And then a little while later in the day, he would go, "And here?" And he would shake his head in disbelief and quietly remark, "I am so impressed." And for a little sister, that is a mark of true accomplishment. In closing, I want to quickly mention a Time Magazine article that I recently read about education in today's world. An organization known as the Partnership for 21st Century Skills reported that after surveying over 400 human resource professionals, the skills that were, quote, "badly missing" in recently hired high school graduates were their ability to show respect to others, be punctual, be responsible, and work well in teams. And as I thought about my daughter's school experiences, I realized that it was in her arts class that these skills were being taught. Her recent chorus experience, traveling for nine days, cooperating, living, and working collaboratively with 23 other high school girls, getting to her performances on time, working respectfully with international adjudicators, this experience in the arts has provided her with the skills mentioned in this article, the skills that will help her be successful in later life. I want to thank everyone again who made this experience possible, and thank you for your understanding of the importance of the arts in education. Thank you.
We're on to the consent agenda. We have quite a number of items on our consent agenda. Do I?
I hate to do this, but I want to pull D-2, D-8, and D-27, and I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the items.
I'm sorry, D-2, D-8.
D-8 and D-27. Some of them are just silly little things, but.
We'll get to those at the end.
And I'll make a motion to approve the rest.
Second. Did the personnel one, no. On D-13, I just want to note, we are, we have some retirements. And I just went on, inside this large packet are quite a number of retirements. Maria Alfaro Crick from Harding School with us for 11 years. Chandler Armstrong, special ed, with us for 32 years. Ruth Bartz, a teacher at Santa Barbara High School who's been with us for 20, for 33 years. Susan Dokkenhaus, ah, at San Marcos High School, been retiring after 10 years. Judith Edmondson, a teacher at Washington, retiring with 20 years. Vicky Kiosian at Lacumbra Junior High, retiring after 24 years. Leonard Kilfoyle at Santa Barbara High School, retiring after 37 years. Shelley McNellis at Monroe, retiring after 22 years. Dixie Moore at Washington, retiring after 15 years. William Ullafont at Santa Barbara High School, retiring after 23 years. And last, Michael Valencia, a teacher at Santa Barbara High School, retiring after 38 years. Sorry. So, the motion was?
I've been trying to get your.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like to pull D-4, D-5, D-8, D-11. I think some of these are perhaps Mrs. Harder, and D-13, please.
And D-13. Well, there's a couple left there. So, I heard a motion by Ms. Harder, a second by Cordero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll come back to the ones that we pulled after the meet, at the end of the meeting. Okay, we are on to the conference agenda and we are already a little late, but that's okay. This is the first reading of our fiscal recovery plan and public hearing on budget cuts. We have 45 people who have entered, who would like to speak on this matter, and I am going to close this at this point because we are going to spend about half our time with that and that's the way it should be. We're here for a public hearing. But that's, sounds like a good number. So, Dr. Sarvis.
This item is in follow-up to our first interim budget report that was delivered in December and to the governor's budget proposal, which was delivered in January. The district has had reliable budget numbers since the end of the summer. They've been verified by numerous sources, including School Services of California. It is unfortunate that the governor's budget proposal requires us to cut $4 million from our budget, but it does. Two and a half months ago, I requested ideas from staff and the board about any possible cuts so that we could research, first of all, what the proposal might actually save the district, and secondly, so that like last spring, we would have a list that provided the board real opportunities and alternatives, opportunities to make decisions based on their priorities. I also went to school sites to meet with staff for their ideas about possible cuts. I'd like to thank particularly our teachers and other staff for their thoughtful response, and it was truly thoughtful. Tonight's list is not a list of recommended budget cuts from the district administration or from the board. This is my compilation of everyone's suggestion about things that we might be able to do, ideas about things that we might look at, and tonight's presentation will be a report on what those items might be able to do for us by way of making these cuts. Tonight, the board can make decisions about some of these items. It's on the agenda so that they can, but likely is not, they will not make decisions about the final cuts until our next board meeting, which is April 22. We knew in January that we had to send out layoff notices in March before the actual cuts were made. We knew that these letters did not constitute final decisions about what programs would be cut, but we did have to anticipate all the opportunities we were aware of at the time so that the board could move forward on any cuts. There's been a lot of rhetoric about the cuts, some of it misleading. The layoff notices, for example, have been presented as if the district was cutting music and arts. This is not the case. In fact, there is enough latitude on the list for the board to avoid any cuts in music and art simply by retaining junior high electives and making cuts elsewhere. But make no mistake about it, we do need to make $4 million in cuts for next year's budget. What there is not latitude about is the need to reduce staff for an unprecedented enrollment drop in the secondary district of an anticipated 360 students. Reducing staff to accommodate such a large decrease in enrollment sweeps across all subject areas. It sweeps across English and science and math and history, social science, and physical education, and yes, it sweeps across music and the arts as well. Portraying these staff cuts as an offense to music and the arts is somewhat unfair and could equally apply to all of the other areas as well, such as math and science. However, the bright note is that the board's recent approval of a retirement incentive will go a long way to mitigate the effects on employees who are currently holding layoff notices. Since retirement letters will be due April 16, I will be asking the board to meet very briefly, hopefully on the 17th, but I'll do that later at the end of this meeting under the right agenda item to approve the retirement so we can rescind layoff notices as soon as possible. Back to the list. I believe we have captured every idea. Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, will work us through the list, but before he does, I'd like to compliment his efforts. He has put well over a million dollars in savings on the list in areas that do not cut programs, and I might add, he's already paid for the cost of his position. Tonight's discussion is a discussion about the merits of these ideas, and as I say, said, the board can make decisions, but is actually expected to make final decisions on budget cuts at the April 22 meeting. Eric?
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Twice each year, the Board of Education is required to certify financial interim reports. The first interim report is basically a snapshot of the district's expenditures and revenues as of December 31st and has to, I'm sorry, October 31st, and has to be certified by the board by December 15th. The second interim report is an interim report that basically is a snapshot of district revenues and expenditures as of January 31st and has to be certified by the board as of March 15th. And then, both interim reports are subsequently, after they're certified, submitted to the County Office of Education, who exercises fiscal oversight over the school districts. At the time that the first interim was prepared, we were unaware of the governor's horrific proposals with respect to the 2008, 2009 fiscal year budget. At that point in time, we prepared multi-year projections that showed in the first subsequent year, which would be fiscal year 2008, 2009, that we were roughly $1.5 million out of balance. When I talk about current and subsequent two years, that's a critical consideration because fiscal oversight, under the criterion standards that the County Office of Education and the California Department of Ed measure us by, require us to maintain a 3% reserve for economic uncertainties for both the current and subsequent two years. If you can't meet that, or let's say you may not be able to meet that, you certify generally as qualified. If you, if there's unquestionably, if it's unquestionable that you will not be able to meet it, you certify as negative. So, in December, we certified under a qualified financial interim report that basically said, "We're unsure if we can meet our current and subsequent two-year obligations, given that we have a $1.5 million structural deficit." Then, when the governor unveiled his proposal in January, we saw basically a cut that is unprecedented in K-12 education, a 10% cut in revenue across the board, which basically translated into school districts in California using 2.4 less in revenue than they would have to operate in the current fiscal year. So, if you could imagine going backwards by 2.4% in the amount of your own revenue base, that's what we're faced with. So, at that point in time, we prepared multi-year financial projections showing the impact of the governor's budget on our own budget, and that structural deficit of $1.5 million grew from $1.5 to $6 million. So, basically, the structural deficit, which is defined as the ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures, was now $6 million. And the figure of $4 million to be cut is the amount that we need to cut going into '08, '09 to basically keep our head above water, basically be above the 3% recommended reserve level in '08, '09. It doesn't entirely eliminate the structural deficit. That's actually a $6 million figure, but we realized that that was too big of a bite in one year to take. So, once we started preparing the second interim report, we realized that this was a multi-year problem that would have to be addressed over two years. In conversations with the County Office of Education, we realized that we would have to put together a fiscal recovery plan and submit it for their approval that showed the expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements that were approved by the board, and then have those contemplated in our multi-year projection so that they could see that we would be able to meet our current and subsequent two-year obligations at an adequate reserve level. So, that is basically the birth of the idea of the fiscal recovery plan. It's basically a document that encompasses not only what we have to do this year, but areas of further study because this is really a two-year problem and not a one-year problem. So, in putting together the fiscal recovery plan, it was really a team effort. I know that, I think Dr. Sarvis painted me as the chief architect, but I couldn't do this alone. Everybody in cabinet assisted with the plan and actually the business office was instrumental in its preparation in terms of the quantitative analysis. So, what I'd like to do is start with the recovery plan components, which is really the plan assumptions. So, if you move to page four in the plan assumptions, these are the underlying assumptions in the plan before we talk either about expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements. In many cases, we were able to specifically quantify the cost savings with regard to expenditure reductions for certificated staff based on actual salaries and benefits. But in cases where we could not, we used an average teacher's compensation, meaning salary, statutory, and health and welfare benefits of $78,000. We use classified personnel total compensation. In those cases, we were able to most likely get the actual numbers and we use those. All cost savings have been rounded. Cost savings are always identified as ongoing unless specifically identified as one time, and that's an important consideration that I'll talk about in a moment. and that's an important consideration that I'll talk about in a moment. For the purposes of the plan, cost savings can either be revenue enhancement, or it can be expenditure reduction. Cost savings are always identified as, the ones that are not ongoing are identified as one-time, and all expenditure reductions in '07, '08 should be construed as such. The plan doesn't contemplate the recommendations of School Services of California with regard to the review of the business office, and there might be additional costs that are presented to the board at a later date. I want to emphasize or reemphasize that this is a multi-year issue, and even though we're making significant progress in terms of increasing or ending balance in the '07, '08 year, basically, all increasing the ending balance does is basically buy us time, because we're not addressing the structural deficit. It's a Band-Aid. So, it buys us time. The issue is, we need to close the gap between revenues and expenditures. We know it's 6 million, we know we can't do that in one year, we're trying to do 4 million this year. If plan assumptions change going into next year, hopefully on a favorable basis, that deficit could be diminished, but we don't know, it could go the other way. What we're hearing on a macroeconomic basis right now is that the state's economic indicators are not going in the right direction. We started with a $14.5 billion deficit at the state levels, now we're in upwards of 16 to 17 billion. We don't know if it's going to deteriorate beyond that. As we move on to some of the issues that the business office started to look at, from an efficiency perspective, we wanted to make sure that we are basically capturing our indirect and direct cost, that we're dealing with cash management, and all those kind of economic considerations to make sure that we're doing everything we can internally. And so, there's a description here on page five of direct and indirect cost. Indirect costs are critical because indirect costs are what the restricted programs pay to the unrestricted programs, or the unrestricted side of the ledger. It's really a charge for the cost of doing business. And the thing that's critical about that is that when we operate categorical programs, we need to make sure that those categorical programs are not requiring a contribution from the unrestricted general fund. It's critical that categorical programs, to the extent possible, are self-contained, meaning they pay for themselves, revenues and expenditures balance. With respect to cash management, we operate on a modified accrual basis of accounting, which means that we recognize income when we know it's coming, we recognize expense when we know it's going to go. We don't operate on a cash basis, but we still have to maintain cash to meet payroll. Districts that get in trouble are districts that deficit spend repeatedly, year after year, and run out of cash. So we're constantly looking at cash management, we're looking at what we need to do to basically manage low cash flow issues. One of the things that the governor's proposing is to move the state apportionment that we receive in July to September, which will exacerbate our cash position, so we're looking at alternatives. Increasing our ending balance on a one-time basis does help our cash position, and so that will help us weather the storm. One of the things that's critical about cash is that when you have an ongoing structural deficit, is that basically, you're not going to be able to close it if it's the magnitude that we're dealing with in a single year. So basically, we know that it's going to be a multi-year issue in terms of realigning the revenues and expenditures, and so we have to have enough cash on hand to basically make sure that even though we're deficit spending, we don't run out of cash. And so when we deal with '08, '09, you'll see there's a number of adjustments. Most of them don't affect program or personnel, but their internal efficiencies, which I would characterize as budget craftsmanship, that basically will help us reach this goal. So if we move to mid-year reductions, these are things, many of them were addressed in the second interim report, some of them have been added since then, and I'll just briefly go through them.
Mr. Smith, if I could interrupt you for a sec, I'm wondering if Mr. Hatyan can do a follow-along on the overhead, as I see a lot of people don't have the attachment in the audience.
It's coming up. They're giving me time to breathe. Yeah, it's already getting parched. It's getting hot in here, too. Thank you. One of the issues with a structural deficit is that anything we do that's positive compounds. So, any adjustments we make this year that basically increase fund balance, meaning that either increase revenues or curtail expenditures, basically, if it's ongoing, will compound in the next year. Conversely, if we do nothing, expenditures will compound and things will get worse. So, in February of this year, the superintendent initiated a spending freeze, and we started looking at what positions needed to be replaced on a mission-critical basis, and then, we started embarking on an evaluation of things that we could do, mostly economic, internal efficiencies that would increase the ending balance, which would buy us time as we put together the plan. A number of these things are technical adjustments, I'll work through them. The first one is the charge of restricted funds, their proportional share of pay-as-you-go costs for retiree health benefits. The school district basically has a pay-as-you-go cost for retirees, for retirees who've earned the benefit, that we've been paying solely with the unrestricted general fund. It's appropriate for categoricals to pay their proportional share, and since that is industry standard in other districts, we started employing it this year retroactively, and you'll see it in the next section, prospectively. By doing that, we were able to capture about $338,000 in unrestricted, by moving it from the restricted to the unrestricted side of the ledger. Another thing we did is started to look at year-end closing entries from last year to see if there were basically any liabilities that were set up, that basically shouldn't have been set up, and conversely, looking at any receivables that were set up and didn't materialize. Fortunately, we didn't have any of the latter, but we did have liabilities that basically, when we started to do some investigation, we felt did not have the supporting documentation to be set up, and so when you reverse a liability, that increases fund balance. One we saw was a liability that we set up to the SLPA. Upon investigation with them, it turns out that not only did we not have to set up the liability so we could reverse it, we found out that there was also a receivable we should have set up. So the receivable amounted at about $274,000, and we reversed the accounts payable or the liability, that was another $180,000. One of the things that we're looking at this year that was not reflected in the second interim report, which is one-time in nature, is using a portion of the elementary and secondary discretionary block grant to make our deferred maintenance contribution. In fiscal year '06, '07, districts were apportioning a district discretionary block grant. It could be used for instructional materials, classroom and laboratory supplies, library, ed tech. It could also be used for deferred maintenance, professional development, home-to-school transportation, or any one-time expenditure designed to close the achievement gap or one-time fiscal obligations of school districts. Based on our review, the elementary and secondary districts have $60,000 and $144,000 respectively. So we are going to basically substitute the portion of the unrestricted transfer to deferred maintenance with those amounts, which will free up about $204,000. Another thing we started to look at was our payroll taxes, such things as workers' comp that the employer pays for. When we started looking at workers' comp, we noticed that the rate that was in the financial system, which is basically expressed as a $1 per $100 payroll, was incorrect. It did not reflect the district's favorable experience modification factor. We had $133, or $1.33 cents per $100 payroll, where it should have been .9842 for $100 payroll. And so when we look at the unrestricted portion of it, that's one-time savings of $197,000. Another thing that's industry standard is that districts that participate in the state school facilities program are required to contribute 3% of their general fund expenditures to a routine restricted maintenance account to basically preserve the state's investment in facilities, because the state gave you dollars to build or reconstruct facilities. You can charge that account an indirect cost rate, because it is a restricted account. Basically, it's about a 4.56% indirect cost rate in our district. We couldn't capture the entire amount in '07, '08, but we were able to capture a portion of the indirect cost rate for a one-time savings of $150,902. We were also able to shift some full-time equivalents from the high school exit exam core to the high school exit exam intensive for a one-time savings of $99,000. Once again, industry standard to charge your developer fee count, commonly called your capital facilities fund, 3% for administrative on your revenue side. That wasn't done, it wasn't done in the prior year. We actually made that happen for a one-time savings of $69,667. And we posted a one-time insurance rebate from Southern California Relief, who's our former property and liability insurance carrier, of $51,264. So one of the things that I want to stress is, the majority of those are one-time. Some of them will be ongoing, and they'll be redundant as I go through the next section, but the one-time increase in fund balance, once again, only buys us time, it does not close the structural deficit. Then when we started looking at cost reductions and revenue enhancements for fiscal year '08, '09, as Dr. Sarvis mentioned, we tried to be as comprehensive as possible, addressing everybody's suggestion, and as you see as we go through the list, if it's not addressed in this section, it'll probably be addressed in one of the subsequent two sections, and I'll talk about those as I go through. We just talked about charging restricted funds their proportional share of pay-as-you-go costs for retiree health benefits. That's recurring, so it's back on the list. $338,788, that's in our favor going into '08, '09. Workers' compensation, we talked about having the wrong rate in there. Well, we got better news. We had a rate decrease on top of it. So what happens is that $170,000 that was basically attributed to our rate decrease was basically coupled with $197,000 in terms of fixing the error in the payroll rate for an ongoing savings of $367,000. One of the things we looked at was the ability of our food service program to decrease the contribution from the unrestricted general fund. We had an outside consultant come in and do a review of the food service program. We found out that basically, we have enough labor, we probably have an overabundance of labor there, and we need to basically increase our participation there to basically catch up with our labor. One of the ways we can do that is basically implementing universal breakfast, either at mid-morning nutrition break or breakfast in the classroom. We recognize that that's a negotiable item, but if we could get started on that, we could realize a savings of at least $200,000, potentially even greater. Once again, in '08, '09, we're proposing that we charge the routine restricted maintenance account indirect cost for a savings of $175,000. The board took an action to change insurance carriers for property and liability insurance earlier this year with an effective date of July 1, 2008, for a savings of $77,000. We also eliminated a broker record for workers' compensation, because we felt that we did not need that additional cost. That will be effective in July of '08 for a cost savings of $60,000. We're charging the 3% administrative fee to the capital facilities fund. The ongoing savings is $34,000. Remember, we did two years and one last year, so it was a higher amount. The food service department proposed, and the board approved, an increase on paid meals for lunch. So, any increase in revenue to the food service fund will actually result in a decrease in the unrestricted general fund's contribution there for a savings of $31,000. One of the things we started looking at is our board policy on bus passes. It's not being rigorously enforced. We think that if we enforce that, we can save at least $25,000. And then, there's a variety of energy efficiency measures. We don't have all the quantitative analysis done on this, but a very conservative estimate, probably extremely conservative estimate, that we could save at least $25,000 on an Potential administrative reductions. Eliminate three administrative FTEs. The first is in assistant principal positions, the second is in the cost savings of not replacing the assistant suit for secondary education, and the third is in reducing an administrative position in special ed for $382,000. We're asked to quantify a 10% reduction in all district office discretionary budgets. We did that, looking at the fours, fives, and six thousand object codes. That basically turned out to be $160,000. Reducing elementary administrative positions at smaller elementary schools, that's $51,000. Putting district letterhead on computer template instead of ordering letterhead stationary for a savings of $3,000. Potential program reductions. Reduce 7.4 certificated FTEs providing junior high electives. I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussion about this, but overall, savings would be $577,000 if the district was to eliminate ninth-grade class size reduction. Currently, it's encroaching or requiring an unrestricted contribution of $571,000, roughly $285,000 for math, $285,000 for English. Staffing all comprehensive high schools at parity, recognize that there's been ongoing discussions with SBTA about this for savings of $560,000. Reduce the number of instructional assistants, especially in special ed. One of the things we were struggling with was maintenance of effort. We started looking at maintenance of effort issues and the exceptions. One of them is when you have a decreasing population of special education students. We're able to demonstrate that we have decreased in special ed students, both in the elementary and secondary over prior year. So we're looking at a significant decrease in the number of special ed instructional assistants, $433,000 is the savings. Reducing school psychologists from 18 to 13, a similar rationale for a savings of $425,000. Provide certificated retirement incentive. The board approved, and SBTA agreed to the retirement incentive. We have an estimate of $240,160. That number is still dynamic, we're waiting for all the retirement letters to come in, and I believe April 16th is the deadline. Replacing retiring certificated librarians with media techs, if we did that, would be $176,000 in savings. Eliminating four-site-based program slash resource specialists and replacing with clerical positions would be a savings of $290,000. Reducing classified support staff proportional to enrollment declines in elementary schools, basically anywhere between $37,000 and $200,000, and I believe that we've used the $37,000 in our tabulation summary in the back. Reducing hours of health assistance at all schools, trying to basically standardize that in terms of making them all consistent, in terms of not only FTE, but also looking at whether we have health assistants that are working 12 months, and whether they should be working 12 months. Anyways, the savings would be $62,000 if that was implemented. Staff all junior high schools at parity for a savings of $46,000, let's call it $47,000. Eliminate the expense of oral J testing, including associated costs for use of substitutes, would be $27,000. The next section deals with additional analysis and long-term health. These are things that we're either pursuing right now or will be pursuing over the next year. I think much of the community knows that we're diligently looking at a parcel tax, and the board is actually assessing that right now. Obviously, if we decided to do something this year, the board would have to call an election by August 6th to get on the November ballot, and I guess that's enough said about that. Eliminating third-grade class size reduction, that is not something that was proposed in '08, '09. It is something that we had to do the quantitative analysis on, in case we do need to do something like that in '09, '10. There would be an ongoing savings of about $1,400,000, call it $1,500,000. Pursue development or exchange of district properties for general fund revenue. There's ongoing analysis and assessment of the district's two large pieces of real property and what can be done there in terms of leasing them for some kind of revenue gain. Reexamination of the AB 602 SLPA funding model. We're in current discussions with the SLPA about what the funding model means to us, and there's been a variety of studies done by Paul and there's been a variety of studies done by Paul Goldfinger from School Services of California. We're trying to get our arms around what those studies mean. Relocate the district office to Santa Barbara Junior High School. Lease of commercial property at 720 Santa Barbara Street. It's probably not something we could do next year, but it's something we will study with the idea that it's a viable commercial space and we could, basically, generate a lease stream that could be unrestricted in nature. Prorate health assistance according to school size. We have the same number of health assistants, or actually, the same number of hours of health assistance across schools regardless of enrollment size. Basically, the thought there was an effort to, basically, make them correlate in hours to the number of students that are being served at each school site. Renegotiate ground lease or offer to sell MODOC fire station property to the City of Santa Barbara at fair market value. We basically have a 50-year ground lease with the City of Santa Barbara executed in 1966 that basically states we leased them. That piece of property that the MODOC fire station is on for $600 per year. I'm glad my name's not on that lease. Reduce over-identification of special ed students. Offer additional support classes through SSD process. Adjust staffing patterns for special ed teachers to reduce the need for more teachers. Teach secondary special ed students to use the MTD in lieu of contracted transportation. Eliminate district office program specialists and one secretary. Negotiate MOU for adult ed use of facilities to cover cost of maintenance. We're in discussions with City College about what that means. Eliminate redundant bulk mailings. Obviously, we'd have to have some staff training there with regard to what postal procedures are and how we could curtail cost. Bid home-to-school transportation. As you know, we contract out transportation with Student Transportation of America. It hasn't been bid since 1997. It is a continuing service agreement, so the board is not legally compelled to bid it, but they might want to bid it, looking at, given that it has not been bid, given that we have issues with MTD, and given that we also contract with the Goleta School District for a portion of our student transportation, it might make some sense to consolidate those services into one bid. Install phone systems that use voice-over Internet protocol to reduce cost. We're looking at that issue. Install solar panels on roofs. One of the issues there is our bonds are oversubscribed. You need a large outlay of capital outlay to, basically, implement something like that, even though the savings do accrue to the unrestricted general fund. Sell carbon offset credits was the first time I've ever seen that suggestion. We did some research on that. Not aware of any school districts doing it, but will continue to investigate it. Have public pay for sports events parking. We're still looking at that whole issue. We're not sure that we have the legal authority to, basically, charge for parking. In a prior district I was with, the analysis we did is that we do not have that authority. Require students to make up every absence with Saturday school. Currently, Santa Barbara High School is the only comprehensive high school that's, basically, effectively using a Saturday school for recapturing ADA. We are collecting data, or we have collected data, from the other two comprehensive high schools, and we'll be doing analysis on that over the course of the next year. Provide secondary schools with incentives to reduce costs for substitute teachers. Recycle, haul trash for money. School districts can independently operate as their own trash haulers. We'll continue to look at that and see if that's viable on a cost-benefit analysis basis. Have county pay for more ROP courses. We're already working closely with the South County ROP. Basically, to accomplish this, each high school would need to increase CTE course pathways, ensure that staff is qualified to teach those courses. Implement PERS Golden Handshake, which is essentially a retirement incentive for classified employees. It's really structured to set up for the attrition of classified employees in declining enrollment districts. It's a negotiable item. We haven't had any conversations with our classified bargaining unit, although I'm sure we will. Reduce fiscal-
Mr. Smith, could you spend more time on that? Because there's common confusion about the retirement incentive on the part of the district and a program like this, which is a state program.
Yeah. The PERS Golden Handshake is a state-sponsored retirement incentive for classified employees that, basically, for qualifying individuals that meet the PERS threshold for retirement, will grant them two additional years of service credit that the district pays PERS for. So, to, basically, implement it, there has to be a window opened. Those qualified employees have to opt-in during the window. It has to be quantified. It has to be demonstrated to the County Office of Education that we've saved money, either by, you know, not replacing some of the positions by family or class. And then, it has to be by formula, costed out by PERS, and then we pay for the cost of that service credit over two years. So it's much different than the internally homegrown retirement incentive that was offered to the certificated employees recently. One of the suggestions was reduce fiscal services staff. It's quite likely that we'll see School Services of California come back with a report that says, "Add fiscal services staff," but we put it on the list. So those are things that we're going to consider, we're going to continue to look at. Some of them might be viable in the next year. Some might take several years to do the kind of research we need to do. And then, our last category was considered, but would probably not yield cost savings. And the issues that fell in here were, we can't do something because, one, there's a legal constraint; two, it's negotiable; or there's some other kind of constraint. We've had a lot of conversations, a lot of suggestions, that somehow we could collateralize our real property to, basically, substitute for 3% reserve for economic uncertainties. Add code 17462 is pretty specific that the sale of real property is restricted for capital outlay and/or deferred maintenance. Ergo, some kind of collateralization or substitute would probably be subject to the same restrictions. Closing elementary school was one of the suggestions. One of the issues we started to look at is that the elementary district, from all appearances, is bottomed out in enrollment and is really starting to grow. We're looking at potential growth, even though it's minimal growth, in the next couple of years. That coupled with the fact that the Hope School District has, basically, rescinded their inter-district transfers, and several of those students will probably show up in our schools next year. We just don't think closing a school is a prudent decision at this juncture. Rent Ortega Street campus, that was already called for in terms of what its long-term purpose was in the facilities master plan adopted by the board. Staff, including the superintendent, should reject pay increase. Obviously, pay increase was negotiated by employees, you know. Basically, there's no truth to any rumors that we are going to rescind on that. So, superintendent and staff was willing to join, or willing to join with staff in a rejection of a pay increase, but it's not likely to be approved. Reduce legal and consultant fees. We're looking at that. One of the issues, when we looked at across the board, 10% reduction of central office discretionary budgets. I know that was touched to some extent there, but we're constantly looking at how we can reduce consultant fees, and legal would be a portion of that as well. I think you've seen that in the internal adjustments we've made in terms of eliminating brokers that we don't need, basically, replacing insurance carriers with more cost-effective. That goes along with our ongoing tension that we're paying to operational efficiency. Eliminate the elementary music program. It's not something that ever was on the drawing board. And if you look at the elementary music program, actually, it leverages other funds, so any cut there would actually have a kind of a ripple effect onto other funding sources within the district. One of the suggestions we received was contract out maintenance. With the advent of SB 1419, with the Alacorn Bill, greatly limits your ability to contract out services. As you can see, those are the criteria you would have to meet in the bullets to, basically, contract out. It's a very difficult test to meet. The one exclusion would be if you were already contracting out a service, like transportation, or if it's specifically identified in code that you can contract it out, like transportation. We already contract out transportation. So. Provide incentive for insurance opt-out. You know, generally, under writer guidelines, the way risk management and health benefits management works is you spread risk across a pool, and that pool, basically, actuarially looks at, are you receiving revenue from all its members? When you allow people to start opting out, your revenue base shrinks, and then your costs are spread over fewer members, and then you might have a one-year savings, but it actually catches up to you in the next year or the subsequent two years. Eliminate Edgesoft contract, not required for compliance. We have the Edgesoft contract is necessary for CPM compliance and is a vehicle for building common assessments to allow more data-based instructional decisions. Convert high school foreign language classes and AP courses to dual-enrollment courses and convert classes to ROP. The City College determines the qualifications for their instructors. We really don't have any control there. Cancel district training. Most of the district trainings that we have are funded by categorical income. So, as you remember, we're looking at expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements that benefit the unrestricted general fund. Hire a special ed lawyer to be at needed IEPs. We're trying to reduce legal, not increase legal. Hire a grant writer. A grant writer probably would not generate any more unrestricted funds because, generally, grant writers bring in grants, and grants usually have no supplanting provisions in the grants, supplement and not supplant. Moreover, we'd have to pay the grant writer with unrestricted funds to, basically, write the grants. Eliminate general fund support for athletics. With the exception of coaching stipends, we don't use the unrestricted general fund to pay for athletics. Charge students for parking at high schools. Once again, we're not sure about our authority here, so we're going to do some more research there. Reduce one-personal office employee. We don't think that the person that was specified here, who's basically a floater between business and personnel, we don't, we think operationally that would create more inefficiency rather than improving efficiency. Eliminate either stipend or overtime for food service administrative assistant. Overtime for this position has already been curtailed, and the stipend is scheduled to expire in April of '08. And reduce hours for district computer operator. This is a four-hour position. Reducing it to any more than four hours, I don't think would be efficient. And the last word should say inefficiency in that sentence rather than efficiency. So, as you look at the totals on page 28, those are the one-time totals for '07-'08. And then, if you looked at the proposed menu for '08-'09, it's roughly $5,386,000. Once again, our target is $4 million of ongoing expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sarvas.
The board may have questions about some of these items before you go to public comment. Should we turn up the lights?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I really appreciate your analysis and you're finding all this money. A million, five sixty-six, eight, right? And that you found in the interstices of the organization, of the books. That's not new money, but it was money that was going out that didn't need to go out or something like that.
I hate to use this, but you hear it statewide, low-hanging fruit.
Okay. I like interstices better. And that is absolutely terrific. So, you know, nobody feels any, well, I'm just looking at it on page 28, and I don't see a lot of pain in correcting those past-
Yeah. Actually, we did not have to touch personnel in the current year.
Okay. And I just, again, want to commend you for that. I have a lot of other observations, but I'll wait until other people have had a chance to talk and so on.
Just to follow on that, it does put pressure on the unrestricted side, in that some of that money is being moved over. How does that affect those programs?
You mean, on the restricted-
I'm sorry, the restricted side.
Yeah. One of the things that I probably failed to address in the plan assumptions because it takes me a while to rev up. But in any event, in issues such as a decrease in the rate of workers' comp, we only quantified when there was an operational savings to the unrestricted. So, let's take the example of fixing the workers' compensation rate or the decrease in the workers' compensation rate. That hits all programs, so it's a benefit to the restricted side. So, there are going to be some benefits, but our focus is on the unrestricted. And I know I've been accused of being cavalier about that, but that's the focus, is we've got to move on the unrestricted. So there are things that we have done that will have benefits to both the unrestricted and restricted side, but we're not taking credit for any of the restricted side because the reserve is made up of unrestricted revenue.
But some money is coming out of it as well, so that should be a pretty much a balance. That is excellent. That's even better.
Well, I guess I would ask, Madam Chair, how you want to structure the discussion. I think that's really probably more to the point. I mean, I could go through each of the items that Mr. Smith has named and ask a question or make a comment, and I don't think it would be very, very useful in terms of our time. So can we talk about how we want to structure the rest of our discussion for the evening? Well, my suggestion would be to begin with, well, obviously, the review sheet, but really starting on page 13, the potential administrative reductions and the potential program reductions. Probably, the audience is more interested in the potential program reductions. Hearing from board members about what their thoughts are, and then hearing from the public because I suspect that board discussion may influence a public comment. If there's some consensus that board members aren't interested in looking at a particular program for budget reductions, then we can potentially move forward from there. I don't know what other board members' thoughts are. Certainly, sounds fine to me.
I hear one fine.
I endorse what-
Okay. Skordary, you're good with that too?
Good. Okay, we have a plan. To start on, you said, page?
Page 13, or the potential administrative reductions.
Do, we are settled. Can I make sure we've got this right? We're all settled on the $4 million, I'm assuming, that that's where our goal is, is to, rather than what we've got here. So we're going to be, sort of, taking programs off the list, is the idea.
I think that's what I'm interested in doing. I suspect that's what the public is interested in hearing about.
Is hearing, right. I would think so. Can I ask one more question, Mr. Smith, before we? The ongoing, this year's amount that's been saved, we're not-
You're not counting that.
We're not counting. We don't get to credit ourselves.
Because here's the issue. I did that deliberately so the ongoing savings would not be obfuscated by the one-time savings because we're trying to go in with a very conservative position, and we know there's things that the board has not seen at second interim that you'll see at third interim that, basically, will be expensive, so we want some buffer. And I'll give you a couple examples. One, it looks like we're going to have to do a secondary textbook adoption that's going to require a significant amount of unrestricted. We have no choice. We've got to do it, and that's what we're here for. So, that's an issue. When the retirement incentive shakes out, right now, we don't know exactly where it looks like until the 16th. It could be better. If it doesn't get, you know, right on target, it could, you know, that'll be refined, is what I'm saying, before April 22nd. So there's things like that that we, basically, want to hedge on. So what we want you to do is, basically, focus on '08-'09 because '08-'09 is what really closes the structural deficit, the structural gap.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that we're stating that really clearly because- clearly, because, so basically, you're saying that the 1.5 million, almost 1.6 million, on page 28, does not count towards the $4 million that we need to cut?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're really looking at, I'm talking for the people, I'm citing these for the people who have the document in front of them, we're really looking at the lists that are on page 29 and 30.
Right. Because even though some of the suggestions might be recurring, that's the reason we structured it that way. So even though we might have made an adjustment in '07-'08 that's recurring, we're counting it in '08-'09 as kind of the jumping off place.
We have two copies of this. Does it matter which one we're...
Yeah, the second copy is the current one. I think yes.
Need to refer to the revised attachment E1.
And there are copies in the back of the room for members of the public.
If there are not enough copies, we will make more.
They're exactly the same amount.
Maybe we can show that up on the...
Maybe we can leave it on the screen.
On the screen. Okay, so our job is to take $1,386,760 off this list.
I'm sorry, could we repeat that amount?
Off the administrative reduction.
No, on page 30.
That sounds like a good place to start.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know what you're saying. Okay.
We're taking, okay. Am I, did I state that correctly? Yes. What happened?
If we're just looking, for me, if it's okay if I get going...
Yes, please.
Just looking at the potential administrative reductions, I personally, I don't have any issues with this. It will depend on the reorganization plan in terms of how this is actually presented. I know that, I've seen the way, the number of duties and how they're going to, you're struggling to reassign them. I'm also, wanted to talk sort of very broadly, because this comes up again and again throughout this fiscal recovery plan, the idea of parity, where a lot of times it's just attempting to place the idea of parity just on the number of students enrolled, when our schools are vastly different from each other. And I think that we need to be careful as a board, that we don't just say, this is about the number of students, but if you have 500 at-risk students and 500 not-at-risk students, they may need different services. And I hope that common sense and safety and student achievement is what's going to be, what guides decisions and not just a bare-bones number. And I don't know if my fellow board members want to chime in on just administrative reductions. I can go ahead to the second section, but maybe others want to talk about this.
Well, I would concur with what you just said, Ms. Parker.
As was I.
Ms. Parker.
I mean, to me, that's what parity means. Parity is, how do you deal with establishing some kind of equity among incommensurables? And I think we have a lot of incommensurables among our junior highs, for example. So how do you, you have to find some kind of a package that deals with recognizing that and still strives to make it seem like that there's some context of equity.
Please.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk to her.[852.75][852.75](LAUGHTER) I would like to make some suggestions about, in the administrative services area. And what I note here under imposed 10% reduction, it's in the 4,000 to 6,000 series of accounts under the accounting code numbers. I'd like to see some possibilities for doing personnel cuts at the district office, reducing administrative services, and one that I have long felt that the district can do without, and it did for many years during my tenure and, or my observations, is a public relations office. I don't think we need a public relations office, and that, by my guesstimates, that's probably going to save us about $80,000 a year. Many people have often said that, and I don't mean to offend anybody in this room, especially the phalanx of experts along the wall over there, but many people have observed that we're paying very high-level administrators to attend board meetings, and that we don't use them all that time. Occasionally, we do, but that was, that's a relatively new practice. We never did that some years ago. And I'm not sure how much that adds up to, but I've seen items on this list as little as $3,000, and I'm sure that over a years' period that it would at least match that and maybe more.
I guess I just, I just want to interrupt you on that one, because I'm willing to put any of these suggestions on for a discussion at the next April meeting to examine more administrative reductions, but I don't think that that one costs anything. It's part of what they're paid. They're just working longer hours based on their salary.
They'd be happy to be released.[970.75][970.75](LAUGHTER)
I'm...
That's not a cost, longer hours of work?
No. They're paid a salary, not by hour or any other increment.
They wish it were an extra cost.
And Mr. Price also?
That's a legal contract. I believe that is a fixed amount.
Well, I really don't know how it works.
Well, then we should...
But I see a lot of, I see a lot of high-priced talent here at night, and I've assumed that in, I learned the word real cost when I took economics, that there are some real costs involved in that, and that's what I'm trying to address.
Then I guess we should get them out there.
Okay. I'm trying to winnow my list to the ones that are strictly administrative. I've been on the board nine years, and I do remember, and enrollments have gone down, and I don't have accurate numbers on this, but I could swear that the number of people who work in the central office has gone up. And I would like to hear, I'd like to see some analysis on this.[1043.25][1043.25](APPLAUSE) Dr. Robertson has given me some data on it, but it's just, I have trouble reconciling that with my own observations. And part of that, I was led to by looking on eddata. I don't know how many folks use that website, but when you look at the district level on eddata, you can look at the expenditures of the school district. And I looked at the financial statement for the Santa Barbara district. Unfortunately, the newest one was '06-'07, I think, maybe '05-'06. And here, and it struck me, one item says, "Total expenditures for board and superintendent, $1,138,645." Now, I've asked Mr. Smith about this, and he's helped me understand it. There, when you look on this, if anyone or any of you are interested in doing so, you can punch in and get the functions that these are used for, and I don't have that sheet with me. But that breaks down in a different way, depending on what codes. Mr. Smith, maybe you could say that. I know you can say it better than I can.
We use the standardized account code structure. All school districts in California are required to use it, and most people are familiar with fund and object. Fund, like the general fund, or the cafeteria fund, or the deferred maintenance fund, and then basically the major object groupings, 8,000 for income, 1,000 for certificated, 2,000 for classified, 3,000 for benefits, and so on and so on. There's also resource, which basically usually characterizes whether something is restricted or unrestricted, and restricted income sources have unique identifiers. And then we have functions, goals, et cetera, et cetera. Well, if you look at functions, and a function will show, basically, there's a board and a goal function. If you just pull up something like that, it can collapse information, depending on how things are coded, across several income or expenditure sources. So it kind of distorts it in that perspective. If you just wanted to look at, and I'll give you an example. Let's say something was charged all attorney's fees, you know, for expulsions, for, you know, whatever. I mean, it might be charged to a superintendent or a board function, but there might be other things charged there, and so it doesn't really give you the answer you want, is, I guess, what I'm trying to say.
And that's exactly what happened with my inquiry. I didn't get the, I got a lot of paper.
You got a lot of paper, but you probably, maybe you got more answers than you wanted, but you didn't understand the answer because it was voluminous.
I tried to unpack this number, and I found it broken down to some 500-some-thousand for miscellaneous expenses or something. Then I could get that broken down to a very substantial hunk of money for legal fees, about $60,000 for consulting fees that have to do with salient associates. That's money from the general fund that's spent for that property development. And I want, and I try, I have a point where I'm headed with this. I'd like to understand it better, and I think that we, that the board and the public need to understand it, because I can see that a legal fee, if it's charged to the board and if it's for expulsion, that, you know, yes, we deal with expulsions, but then that would be nice to see that. And if there are legal fees that are being charged to the board that are for something else, we ought to know that.
Right.
And we don't have that kind of information, and it's, and for me at least, that would be very helpful.
And basically, there's a way to do it. You know, you've heard the old axiom, garbage in, garbage out. So, I mean, if we code it and we have unique identifiers, let's say for legal that basically separates expulsions from other types of legal, that's easily done. We just have to do it when we develop the budget.
Now, my point about this is that you have mentioned about controlling deficit spending. What I found in this process was that, for example, the salient associates, we have a contract, and the most recent one was 2005. Since that time, $5,000 a year has been put in to cover those expenses, or not a year, $5,000 goes in every so often. Because it's 5,000, it never comes to the board. For $5,001, it would come to the board, and there would be a public record of it. And this, over a period of a little over a year, in the number that you gave me, Mr. Smith, came out to about $60,000, over which we, you know, it's sort of, it's sort of like the dynamics of escalation. You'd say, well, it's a little bit, it's a little bit, but when you get down here, you look back and say, oh, that is a lot more than I realized. And had I thought about that as a, as where it was going, I might have had second thoughts about starting down the path. And the same thing, we have our contract with the law firm Mr. Price represents, and it is a contract that is, continues until stopped, effectively. And again, we have, and probably all, I'm not really questioning the merits of the expenditures, because I don't know what they're for. All I know is that I see an aggregate amount of money. I would literally have to go to the purchase orders to find out more about what was done. Mr. Tangway is nodding because he's the one that taught me that, okay? And yet, I'd like to, I think it would be very important to know, as we start these processes that have no internal checks, no automatic checks, and can escalate to large amounts of money. If we're going to control deficit spending, I think we simply have to address that. That's all I wanted. Oh, and one more item. My first motion, when this comes up for a vote, will be my routine motion, and my colleagues, some of them don't like this motion. And that is that the board quit accepting any compensation whatsoever. Adds up to about $12,000 or something like that.
Total, for all of us. For all of us per year.
Pardon me?
For all of us.
All of us.
Yeah.
It's just, to me, it's 12,000 bucks, whatever it is, but it's a very, very significant statement to me, that before we cut $4 million from other things...
And we always respond the same way. We always respond the same way.
You always respond the same way.
It means that people won't run and become school board members.
Well, and any board member who chooses is more than free to do that at any time and could have done it a long time ago.
Yes.
Years ago.
Yes. Anyways, we need to keep moving on. You had a comment, I believe, on administrative...
Well, I know, as you're looking at these administrative cuts, and I already brought the 1.6 in assistant principals to you, I think we can live with that. I think we can make adjustments. I think we can make those fairly, so that we do serve the schools and the schools' needs, and not simply formula the coverage. I already told you that we would not be replacing the assistant superintendent, and I have not brought you the reorganization on that. We've been busy with other things, but that would save about half of that position. The one position for special education is a position that due to recent developments, I would ask you to postpone for a four-month period. That would make this a reduction for next year of 75% of a position rather than a full position. But these are cuts that I think we can live with. Now, at the same time, and perhaps you need to see this on a future agenda, if we cut, if we absorb a lot of the responsibilities of the assistant superintendent position, then we can't go cutting other positions. For instance, our coordinator of special projects is a point person for emergencies in the district, point person for public records, responsible for the complaint process, for board policies, and for communications. And I simply don't have the time to do that job.
No, just a quick comment, that I am fine with the administrative reductions that are in front of us, you know, pending seeing the reorganization plan. I'm willing to entertain more, but there's nothing that I have any objection to that I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with.
I would ask you at this point to make that 2.75 rather than three FTEs.
Up here, the very first item.
Yeah.
May we move on to programs? Oh, okay.
No one else seems to want to...
We've discussed it on a number of times in public sessions, so I don't think there's anything really new or startling under the list that the superintendent and the deputy superintendent have provided. Under potential program reductions, I have some questions and I have some comments. They go in a different order, I believe, on the summary sheet than they do under the program. So I'll refer to this narrative list that Mr. Hetyank has on. The first item on the narrative list is reduce 7.4 certificated FTEs providing junior high electives. And I'd prefer just to take this off the table. I'm not interested in making...[1718.33][1718.33](APPLAUSE)
Can you hold your applause, please? We need to have a meeting, so just hold on.
And I don't think that I'm stating anything that probably other board members are in agreement with.
She just got to say it first.[1740.22][1740.22](LAUGHTER)
Exactly. Exactly. The other item that I personally would like to take off the table is ninth grade class size reduction, although I would very much like to hear why the staff recommends it. From my perspective, it's a value added. Whether or not it has any real benefit in, for instance, STAR testing in March or April occurring this year, whether it has any measurable benefit, I think the measurable benefit is in helping ninth grade students make the transition to high school. Those English classes, in particular, provide a mechanism for administrators to reach students. I think that there are a number of unquantifiable benefits related to that class size reduction, so I would actually like to take that off the table. I know that the number... I know that the number of budget, recommended budget reductions would accommodate those two programs in full this year. But I would very much like to hear the staff rationale for putting ninth grade class size reduction on there. In addition, I have specific questions about the school psychologists and the, how the ratios were arrived at. I know their industry standard, if you will, is 1,000 students to one school psychologist. And I know that the vast majority of students never see a school psychologist. So you're talking total numbers of students per school psychologist. But I'm not sure how the ratios were reached, and I suppose probably of more concern than what the actual hard ratio is, is that a number of the more recent hires were bilingual, bicultural. And I guess I would be reluctant to lose that kind of value added in our psychologist force. And then I also have questions about the librarians. I'm specifically concerned, not just about the services that would, the kinds of services a librarian versus a library tech can offer, but I'm very concerned about the number of hours of operation that a library would be open. I know particularly on the high school campuses, they're open before and after and during lunch, and, you know, often provide a haven for students, but are also the location for lots of activity, getting homework done, tutorial sessions, that sort of thing. So I'm really interested in how it might impact hours of operation. And I think those are my big questions.
Ms. Cordero.
Well, I wasn't sure if anybody was going to answer those questions, but I wanted to follow up on the question, because the item on school psychologists and the item on instructional assistance in special education, I wanted to know whether those reductions, or, well, how closely those reductions would correlate with an enrollment reduction, or, I'm not saying this clearly, but I guess the idea is, are we reducing them commensurate with the reduction in enrollment, or are we, is this a recommendation to reduce them at a higher rate than what the enrollment has reduced?
I think there's no industry standard, so I can't give you that one-to-one correlation. That's the problem. So, one of the things I will tell you with regard to special ed instructional assistance, many of those positions are never filled, because we can't fill them. So they're vacant positions, but we're carrying them in the budget, and we have to account for like we're going to fill them. So that's my best answer.
This, in my working with staff, this is a common recommendation among people in both special education and regular education. Now, I'm not saying that all of our teachers would say that we should cut in this area, but it is, it was one of the common suggestions made to me, that we look at that, and that we seem to be overstaffed in this area, that we could be sharing aides between students. We should not universally assign a one-on-one special ed assistant. Often when students go on to a higher grade level, a junior high or a high school, the special education aides remain at the elementary school or the junior high school, and they're just more positions than seem to be needed.
Well, I had questions as well regarding the, I certainly, I think we are probably all in agreement on the electives, and I was also concerned about the class size reduction. So I, like, Ms. Harder would like to know what the rationale for that was, and whether it was purely financial, or whether there was any pedagogical basis for that.
It was purely financial.
Okay.
It was just a hit on the general fund.
It's a significant contribution from the unrestricted general fund.
Okay. And, so I'm looking at, if we took the first two off the list, junior high electives and ninth grade class size reduction, that would be, what, 1,148,000, I think, if I add it up correctly.
Yeah, I know, I should be able to do that in my sleep.
No, no, I did it wrong, sorry.
Yeah, 1,148,000. Okay.
So we're okay.
So, that would leave us?
Not much.
No, a little bit, almost 200,000, not quite left to play with, or hopefully come up with. So those, that would be my recommendation, to take those two off the board, off the list.
Okay. Parker?
I'm in complete agreement with Mrs. Harder and Mrs. Cordero, in terms of taking the first two off the table. I, for the school psychologists, can you tell me, do our charter schools use our school psychologists, or do they contract with?
They contract with us.
With us, okay. And I also am concerned about the certified librarians at the secondary level. I think, you know, in an ideal world, we'd still have them at the elementary level. So I think that this is unfortunate, but I also think that it's really critical that it be staffed at the high schools. And so I will have questions about that, and in terms of what kind of plan, actual plan you would come up with for serving students if this cut came through. I also have a quick question about the oral J testing. What do principals and teachers say about eliminating oral J?
Well, we've had lots of conversations over the last three years about the oral
J. It's not a question that we do need this type of assessment, but it may be that oral J is not the one that, you know, we need to use. This, as Dr. Sarvis and Mr. Smith said, these are suggestions that came from a lot of sources. So it's not just something that, like, I dreamed up, or, you know, that kind of thing. So there's, I think there are comments on both sides of this issue, teachers who love it, teachers who think we could do without it.
Can I just follow up on that question? The teachers who think that we could do without it, do they think that it needs to be replaced with something else?
Yes, to the most part, yes.
So potentially, that wouldn't necessarily be much of a savings, because we might eliminate this $27,000, but we would perhaps replace it with another expense.
No, not necessarily. There are other tests that are similar that are free. There are other types of similar tests that are even within our adopted textbook series. And with the new adoptions coming out, the English Language Arts will be out next November, there, all of the new adoptions, not only do you have to pay for consumable, I mean, you don't have to pay for consumables, they are filled with assessments, and online assessments. I mean, they're wonderful. So we anticipate that this would be covered, you know, for nothing, no cost.
And would we, would we hamper, I assume we would, hamper the tracking of student performance by eliminating this measure?
Many of our schools, well, I shouldn't say many. A handful of our schools are already using other assessments. Dibbles is one that's very commonly used all over. So there are other ways of tracking this. It would be a matter, at some point, of apples and oranges, like, a lot of our, you know, when the tests, the assessments change, you can see how closely they align, and be able to figure if you're, you know, being able to track it correctly, and I know Davis could help us with that. So it's not a huge savings, but it's something that's on the table, and, you know, it won't hurt our tracking kids.
I would also like to point out that there are some things under additional analysis and long-term health that may be able to come into play for 0809. So as we talk about taking off this and heading towards this 1.3 million target, that may be augmented by other savings that can be implemented much more quickly, I hope.
And just for the point of clarification, with the reduction, of the reduction of administrative programs, you have to add $75,000 back into that number.
Okay.
Which I don't think we did.
Yeah.
Could, no, go ahead.
Let me go ahead and finish this, then I'll let you. Because at our next meeting, I would really, when we look at this again and see some further clarification in numbers, I would like to look back again at the junior high electives, because we put money back into junior high electives after the school year started, up to 8.0 FTEs. And three of the junior highs were able to staff for that, but one, Glietta Valley, did not staff up to its 2.0 FTEs, and therefore, we ended up funding 7.4 for the year. However, I do think that 8.0 is a more appropriate number, and if it turns out that we can put that back in, it's something I'd like to look at, at the next meeting.
And I was specifically talking about the 8.0, particularly since when we put money back in, we were, it was what, October?
Yes, and it was very hard to imagine.
And I'm sure it hampered the ability of principals to fill classes, to find teachers for classes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's exactly what I wanted to come back to. The 8.0 is not currently in the budget. The 6.0 is. To go to the original 8.0 would require another $156,000.
In addition to the 577?
In addition to the 577, yes, yes. So it's currently, 6.0 is currently costing us 577, and 8.0 would cost us an additional 156,000.
Okay. That wasn't 100% clear from how it was laid out, but.
There's also the issue about equitable distribution of those FTEs. We currently distribute those two to each school, or we gave the schools the option of having two at each of the junior high schools. Yet the junior highs are very different sizes, and as you say, they have different needs as well, so.
They have different needs, but for something like electives, I would think that it would make sense to base that based on enrollment.
Is that a decision that we have to make at this time? I mean, I'd like to just focus on maintaining the 8.0 FTES, and then at a future date, discuss whether we would allocate them equally among campuses, or proportionally among students.
We could bring that back to you.
I'm done for this section. I would, at some point, I hope we'll come back to talk about additional analysis and long-term health.
Can I just clarify, Dr. Sarvis, on page 15, this page where it talks about the 577,000 for FT, it suggests that it's referring to 7.4 FTES.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry.
That was what I thought, so it wouldn't.
So it would only be .6 additional FTS?
I confused you.
Is that accurate?
That's exactly the case, and the additional cost, then, would not be $156,000.
Right.
The additional cost would just be .6. Let's see, let me borrow your calculator for just a moment.
.6 times 78,000?
46,800.
78 was the figure that Mr. Smith was using.
This does cover the cost of 7.4 FTEs, the 577,000. So it would only be another six tenths.
46,800.
46,800.
Go to 8.0.
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, that figure you see that's shown in that paragraph is in error. The 156,000, it's only 46,800.
Okay.
Glad you asked that, thank you.
Yeah, that clears that up.
Hold on a sec.
Yes, that would be right.
75,000.
We seem to have a lot of consensus here, so far.
Should we go ahead and, can we make a motion to?
Well, yeah, we have to also wait for the comments. But there seems to be a lot of consensus, I don't, I haven't said anything, you want to go ahead?
Well, you don't have any comments?
No, I do, I'm just letting my members go first.
Oh, oh.
Well, I share the sentiments about the junior high school electives. They seem to be the whipping boy of the district in 2003, when there was a need to raise $600,000. Seventh period date was cut, which effectively decimated electives, and it's been a struggle ever since, and I'm really gratified to hear comments by Mrs. Cordero, and Mrs. Harder, and Mrs. Parker. And I'm sure I'll be gratified to hear your comments, whatever they are, Mrs. Malikoff. So I really endorse that. I, too, am ambivalent about the class size reduction, and I guess on that, I wanted to ask superintendent and assistant superintendent Turnbull, do we have any research about the effectiveness of class size, of that program?
You mean, within our district, like a before and after?
Well, I'm aware, particularly within our district, I mean, even much less rigorous than before and after, but, because I'm aware of a fairly substantial literature on class size, that was produced really by educational economists, I'm thinking particularly of when at Stanford. And basically, they say it was one of the great boondoggles in California educational history, that the research is overwhelmingly inconclusive about the effectiveness. Now, that's, you know, that's, I taught for 35 years, and I love small classes, don't misunderstand me. But in this role, you look and you say, well, what are we paying, and what are we getting? And it would help me if we had some research experience, some kind of program evaluation on the effectiveness of this ninth grade class size reduction, that would help me make a decision.
There is not a strong research basis for class size reduction.
You've had the same thing I've been reading.
Yes, and if there is, it's at the lowest levels. So first grade, and that's why the state started with first grade, second grade, and went to kindergarten. In fact, the reason kindergarten wasn't the starting point, was that kindergartens were not full day. So it was thought that the greatest impact would be in first grade.
If I could just interject myself into this discussion, I think I indicated that the benefits are not quantifiable. I've seen a lot of the same research that you have seen, but I have to say that it touches every single student who enters in ninth grade. And I think that the value to a parent and a student, knowing that some part of their schedule will be a small class, when the rest of their classes are loaded at 35 to 1, has an enormous salutary benefit. So while it may not be quantifiable, I think that it is a program that would, that parents, teachers, students would probably go down fighting over this one.
You know, the way you describe it, it almost has the sound of homeroom, functionally. And that, I hear that argument very clearly. Well, that's all I wanted to ask, and when I say research, I always include the possible qualitative studies that address the same question.
Well, I also want to concur that I would love to see the junior high electives taken off, the elimination of the class. I'd also like to see, please, please, no, 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 the ninth grade class reduction taken off. I also have a problem with the psychologists, the R here, that perhaps we are cutting a little too much, maybe we don't have to, somewhere in there, somewhere in between. And I hear the other comment about the librarians and just making sure we have the hours that are needed. I think we've gotten a lot of agreement. I'm amazed, this is a lot for us. And, not that we agree totally, but we're moving in the right direction. We have a large stack of. We have a large stack of hearing of people who want to speak. And we are, I have fifteen minutes left of this time, although I'm going to go on. I usually give people three minutes, but I, just, we can't do that. Two minutes, two minutes? Can we say things in two minutes? Yes. And we need a little break, I think, first.
And also, just, I'll be calling the names when the time comes. If you want, I'll have the stack here. If there's something, if you don't want to speak, if you have somebody else that you know is going to say something similar to what you, the point you want to make, you can certainly pull your card from here. But you cannot add cards at this time.
We are going to take a ten-minute break, you can come and ask me the question. So ten minutes at, ten of, I can't see that.
Well, the actual.
Before I go to public comment, I was requested by, several people requested a few things of me. One is an explanation about high school electives. So I'm going to leave that to Dr. Sarvis to explain that again here. I think we started off with that, but some people missed.
I know there were layoff notices sent out that cut across all subject areas, and those included music, high school music. The actual effect of the cuts may be negligible on music. Because when we go to staff electives, here's a good example. Students are required to take four years of English. They're required to take twice as many electives in order to graduate. And when we go to staff for those electives, it will all depend on student demand. So if we, for every thirty-five students, we have another course. And when high schools set up their master schedules, if it's a drum line, if it's a band, any number of courses, if they have the same demand they had this year, you'll have the same courses.
Thank you. The next question was about the electives here. And it was a request from the audience that we actually vote on it.
Yeah.
We are allowed to do that. I was, I sort of said to people in the audience, no, we always wait till the next time. We give ourselves time to do everything. But it seemed, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we remove the junior high electives from the list of potential program reductions.
Do I hear a second?
Second, eh?
So I heard a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. God, at the risk of being booed now, it's not that I don't want to vote on it. I want more particular information. So in principle, I'm happy to remove it from the cut list. But for instance, and I'm happy to say up to eight-point-oh FTEs. But I want more information about the parity issue. And I want more information about what, from principals, what their master schedules will even be able to accomplish at this point and whether or not, what kinds of demands, what kinds of requests they're getting for electives, and whether or not they'd actually be able to offer it. So up to eight-point-oh FTEs, you know, I'm willing to go. But clearly want more information. I don't want this to be the end of the discussion, I feel like I need more.
Can we bring back?
And I would, I'd be happy to amend the motion to include a report back and further discussion on the issue of parity and master schedule.
With, and also with the proviso that it may not end up being eight-point-oh. It may be seven-point-four, it may be seven-point-six. There may be some play in there. Up to eight-point-oh.
Up to eight-point-oh.
I have only one, excuse me, one question for our lawyer. We have not had public comment on this. Is it, do we absolutely have to have public comment before we vote, or can we vote beforehand?
You should take, you should take public comment before you actually do the vote. And the reason for that is because by saying no to certain cuts, it could be viewed as saying yes to remaining cuts. And were you to take that action, then it would be prior to the time that you took public comment, which could be the subject of an issue that might be raised.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Price a question? Also, this is agendized as a public hearing. Should the hearing be closed before there's a vote?
Normally, of course, whenever anything is agendized as a public hearing, the board goes through at least the formality, if not the requirement of opening and then closing the public hearing before the board formally votes. So my answer would be yes.
Well, I will withdraw my motion at this time if that would help them.
The motion sits here, we're going to do the public comment. So how many people do we have doing public comment right now?
Do you want to open this as a public hearing?
She did that at the beginning, actually.
Oh, did you by announcing the agenda item?
Was that enough of announcement, or do I need to do this more formally?
Well, it never hurts to go ahead and say so. Although quite frankly, I don't think that, since there is any correlating statutory requirement, you're just dealing with, you know, straight district issues, that it really doesn't matter. But when in doubt, do it.
I hereby open the public hearing.
Wow, wow, wow. I think we have about forty or so that are still on the list. And feel free, if, when I call your name, you can just say pass if it's something that somebody else has already said, or you can just say, you know, agree with previous comment or something like that. I definitely will cue people, don't worry. And I will also give you, are we going to give them two minutes? I will give you a thirty-second warning when your two minutes is almost up. First off, we have Juliette Stuster, who's going to talk about Enchanté and what it means to arts education. And next up, it's going to be David Holmes, followed by Daniel Hanley.
Hello, I would like to add one more positive comment about Enchanté. My name is Juliette Stuster, and I'm representing Enchanté, which is the all-women's choir at San Marcos High School. I'm a sophomore this year, and it is my second year participating in Enchanté. Being granted permission from the school board, our instructor, Ms. Torey Okae Brady, planned an amazing European tour. In this spring tour, we had the chance to go to London and Paris. I still remember when she told us last year, it was my freshman year, that we are going to Europe. I remember the girls screamed at the top of their lungs, because not very many people have the chance to do that when they're sixteen years old. We had an opportunity to experience different cultures, sing, which we all love to do, learn more about music, and bond with one another. I was one of the twenty-four girls who traveled to London to participate in London Heritage International Festival at the Royal Academy of Music. Our chorus received adjudications and clinic from the international judges, and we were very proud to win gold. Also in London, we performed at Southward Cathedral and Saint Paul's Covenant Garden Church. We then went on to Paris, where we were privileged to perform at Cathedral of Notre Dame, singing for hundreds of people who were visiting the cathedral. We ended our performance at the,
Thirty seconds?
At the Iglesse de la Madeleine in Paris, where the acoustics were breathtaking. I chose to attend San Marcos High School because I loved to sing, and the block schedule would allow me to participate in a school chorus. This has been an amazing experience, and I'm so thankful that I'm part of it. Thank you for listening and supporting the arts.
Thank you.
David Holmes, followed by Daniel Hanley, followed by Marsha Barr.
My name's David Holmes, I'm the Performing Arts Department Chair at San Marcos High School. I think that the board is making a pretty good decision with the, in regards to the junior high school electives and the tone that you're setting, being aware of their importance. And I applaud you for that effort. I think it's a little disingenuous, though, of staff to say that we're not, you know, going to cut in these areas when they have, in fact, these layoffs that have happened. They have upset teachers to the point where some may be leaving. And what the board needs to understand, and the staff needs to understand, is that the strength of the program is a direct result of the teacher teaching that program. It isn't a matter of taking an FTE and plugging them in to a program. It doesn't work that way. There's an investment that the teacher puts in. You don't take choirs to Europe, and you don't take bands to Carnegie Hall without having a teacher that is inspired and dedicated and willing to go through the extra mile, go the extra mile to make this happen. Okay, I have so much to say, I can't do it in thirty-six seconds. But on this agenda and on these proposed cuts, there's an item there asking for parity among the comprehensive high schools. Again, I believe that your staff has not given you accurate information. It's wrong. The statement that's there is, I will be bold enough to say it is a fabrication. And I hope that others, my colleagues, will speak to some of these issues, because I just, it's horrible to sit here and see this agendized the way it is and know that that is not truth.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I have to, can I say one last thing? The block schedule did not cause the monetary problems that this district sees in the disparity between San Marcos High School and the other comprehensive high schools. It is not a result of the block schedule.
Daniel.
Thank you.
Daniel Hanley, followed by Marsha Barr, followed by Eric Burrows.
To me, music began truly in school. I entered junior high school as a musician who was relatively new to playing music, aside from what I'd learned in years of guitar lessons. Mr. Mike Nun persuaded me to join the Locolina High School Jazz Band. It was then that I discovered my love of jazz music and began to learn how to translate this amazing musical genre onto this versatile instrument. Jazz guitar, however, is not the only thing I've gained from music in high school. Our district is fortunate enough to have such open-minded teachers as Charles Ortega, who has allowed me to further my education beyond what I could have possibly imagined. In tenth grade, Mr. Ortega allowed me to bring home a trumpet for the summer and let me play trumpet in the B Jazz Band at our high school. The next summer, last summer, Mr. Ortega allowed me to bring home an oboe, an instrument that has given me more enjoyment and education than any others so far. There's no doubt in my mind that he would allow me to borrow any other instrument that I wanted. His greatest goal as a teacher is to increase the musicianship of his students by any means possible. With the aid of my school music instructors, what started off as a hobby quickly turned into a lifelong passion. I'll be attending New York University next fall, majoring in music composition. And though I have worked hard all these years without their inspiring teaching, I would have never gotten this far, and I urge you to reconsider their dismissal.
Marsha Barr, followed by Eric Burrows, followed by Lanell Glass.
Daniel is one of our students at Santa Barbara High, and he's a great student. And I've seen him in class and collaborated with one of our teachers as a librarian, and he's a great student. And I'm certainly glad to see that he's doing so well in music. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Sarvis, and district administrators. My name is Marsha Barr, and I'm the librarian at Santa Barbara High School, the home of the Dons. My comments are very short. In our ever-changing digital information landscape, a good school librarian is one of the best educational bargains around. In a nutshell, we are a teacher, an instructional partner, an information specialist, and a program administrator. School librarians helps learners learn, and school librarians help teachers teach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Burrows, followed by Lanell Glass, followed by Michael McLaughlin.
Good evening, thank you, staff and board. My name is Eric Burrows. I teach social studies at San Marcos High School and have done so since nineteen ninety-four. As a historian and an attorney, it's very important for me that the public record is factual and accurate. Several facts regarding the block's schedule and staffing at San Marcos High School. Fact number one, for the first eleven years of the block, we were funded at San Marcos at parity with the other two high schools. That funding was done at an average of thirty-two students per class, an average. How could we do that at San Marcos and yet have an average class size of twenty-eight to twenty-nine and provide students the opportunity to take not five or six classes, but seven or eight classes? It's because teachers at San Marcos High School don't teach a hundred-and-fifty students a year. They teach a hundred-and-eighty students a year. And they also don't teach five classes a year, they teach six classes a year. That's the wonder of the block schedule, that you have so many committed teachers willing and able to do that. Second fact, the district changed that funding schedule two years ago. That was not done at the request of San Marcos High School. That was not done with the approval of San Marcos High School. Maybe we should have caught it, we didn't. That funding was changed by the district to a disparate level with the other two high schools. Unfortunately, in my personal opinion, that funding disparity was locked into place by a contract that you signed, stating that San Marcos would be at thirty-one and that the other two schools would be at thirty-five. I don't like that. We should be at parity with the other two high schools. But to come in and say there's going to be a half a million dollars means you're cutting up to twenty teachers from San Marcos High School, and you are gutting not a program. And it's a little offensive to see San Marcos, a comprehensive high school, doing what it does called a program. You're gutting a school. And that gutting of a school doesn't need to happen. We at San Marcos are willing to take a two-year process to get to parity, and will get to parity. But simply not addressing it as an item means you're gutting a school.
Lanell. Lanell Glass, followed by Michael McLaughlin, followed by Kirk Taylor.
Good evening, I'm Lanell Glass, library teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. Support at electives, libraries, education. I've written the governor, I've written my legislators, have you? Are you supporting the parcel tax? Are we going to get ourselves out of this mess? We need to do that. The possibility of some retirements, however, should not be used as a reason or excuse to decimate a program, the library media program in this case. I'm also concerned that the retirement possibility was used to make a budget when that should have remained confidential, private information, the possibility, even though names weren't mentioned. Someone mentioned library hours. It's true, we're open many hours. I'm there at five o'clock, six o'clock with science fair projects. We're there at lunchtime. We need a credentialed staff person to be there for legal reasons during those times. But our programs are so much deeper than that. It's about curriculum, it's about the multimedia project I just created on slavery. It's about the poetry contest. It's about one-to-one help, it's about technology. So we need credentialed librarians. And if librarians retire, we should simply replace them with credentialed librarians who will be earning a lower salary. Not a crazy germinated system with technicians. They are so valuable as support people in our libraries, but we need teaching librarians. This is a teaching position, not a clerical position, and we need to have that. The savings are not enough, they will ruin a program and cause us to have a very crazy system of people dropping in and out. It's not working that well at the elementary schools despite best efforts. You need to be there to see that, you can talk to Nancy Tobin about that. But we need to not ruin this program, and I really urge you to take a really good look at the breadth and depth of what we do and say that credentialed librarians should always remain in our schools as well as our valuable support staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael McLaughlin, followed by Kirk Taylor, followed by Chris Spear.
So much for the scripting, I got two minutes, I'm going to go quickly. If we look here at your document, it says the additional staffing allotment is a result of implementation of a block schedule applied to two thousand, two thousand and one. That statement is one-hundred percent verifiably absolutely false. That is not just merely a fabrication. I know that people from. I know that people from the district have been in meetings with our staffing formula who know that that's false, so I think it. Borderlines on misinformation to the board, one. Two, the reason for funding disparity is the new contract increased class size, increased student contacts at the other schools by four-point-two percent. It did not do that at San Marcos. So, of course, San Marcos costs about four-point-two percent more. Yes, the only way out of that is to accept it and put us on a two-year plan where we can rectify it. Right now, and I want this part of the public record, if the board approves this, it's really important to understand this, and you hold to the contract that you signed and we negotiated at thirty-one to one, there is absolutely no way to meet instructional minutes. It's that big of a gut of our campus, and if you do not meet instructional minutes, this district will be fined. And saying that we didn't know is no longer an excuse because now you know. It is a mathematical fact, I'm happy to show any board member the numbers for that. Hayward School District was on the same block as us, they did not meet instructional minutes, just last year they were fined six million dollars. Furthermore, if one campus at the high school level is out of compliance in instructional minutes, every campus is considered out of compliance. So, what's the solution? A, you need truth. I know all these numbers in my head, I'm happy to talk to anybody, contact me, shoot me an email, because the truth that you're getting is very distorted. B, let's work together on a two-year plan and make this work for San Marcos without gutting the school. What's up here is completely implausible, probably illegal, and if it's a runaround to undo our contract by eliminating the block schedule, which is what I think this is all about, eliminate the block schedule so you can increase our class size. If that's a runaround, it may be illegal, it's certainly unethical. So, I hope you'll work with us, not against us. Thank you.
Kirk Taylor, followed by Chris Spear and Mary Kirby.
Hi, I'm Kirk Taylor, I'm the math chair at San Marcos High School. I'll be very brief because Michael and Eric have made most of my points tonight very well. All I want to say is to reiterate the point that you are not getting good information about the block schedule. I noticed that there's no one currently working in the administrative staff who has any intimate or prolonged knowledge of working with the block schedule. It's a very challenging structure to comprehend, and it takes more than just rumors like San Marcos costs the district an extra million dollars, okay? That is bad information, and you're getting a lot of bad information. You should talk to people who work at San Marcos, the administrative staff and the teachers who have had lots of experience putting that master schedule together, and that's where you should get your information from, not from memos like the one that we saw today, okay? Thank you.
Chris Spear, followed by Mary Kirby, followed by Nikki Lagerquist.
Good evening. I came here in support of the junior high electives, so I just want to congratulate you for taking the difficult decision to get that off the table for this evening. Something I wanted to share with you, in preparing for the seventy-fifth anniversary for Santa Barbara Junior High, I was able to read hundreds of comments from former alumni, and time and time again, what they shared with us was their memory of their elective courses and how it changed their life and the kinds of things that it opened up for them. It wasn't so much the general education, but it was the arts and their opportunity to explore something that they never thought that they would find interest in, so, thank you.
Mary Kirby, followed by Nikki Lagerquist, and then Frank Anderson.
I'll share my second minute with Mr. Rose from Dos Pueblos High School. I have a son there, senior Dos Pueblos High School, who's been joined band for four years thanks to the support of Mr. Rose, as well as his associates and the extra teachers that had helped. Jeremy needs a little extra help, and he just soared, and it just was a wonderful honor to see him perform with wonderful kids that we have here in the audience, a lot of them had to leave as well. So, I'm grateful for that, I'm grateful for that opportunity. I have another daughter at Galita Valley Junior High, plays the cello in orchestra. Last year I heard a perfect symphony, I don't have a trained ear, but I know that it takes extra hands to constantly tune the instruments, get the sheet music ready for each different instrument. It's got to be trained individuals. I can help my children with their academic homework, but I cannot help them in the music department. That takes trained and skilled individuals, but I thank you for your time.
Mary's son Jeremy has had the experience of a lifetime at Dos Pueblos High School being in band for four years because a very wise superintendent in 1993 took a look at my transcripts and said, "He's qualified to teach instrumental music." Not just he has a degree in music, he has a credential in music. When we are hired, you look at our transcripts, you take a look at the courses that we take, that's how you deem us qualified to teach instrumental music. A vocal teacher cannot teach band, a band teacher cannot teach vocal music. When you cut two English teachers, you don't cut English. When you cut two music teachers, you have cut music.
Nikki, followed by Frank Anderson, followed by Ellie Iverson.
Hello, my name is Nikki Lagerquist, and I'm here to speak on the arts. Unfortunately, this is longer than two minutes, I forgot how things get cut around here. Hello. Hello, Santa Barbara School Board, it's nice to see you again. When I told my friends I was going to talk in front of the school board, they said, "What are you fighting for this time?" And I had to sadly respond the same thing I was fighting for when I was in high school. In talking to a friend about what I should say here, she told me of a school that required that students in detention serve their time by participating in dramatic arts. In my mind, I can see how that would be a beneficial thing to do. This encourages creative thought and gives a chance for the students to express feelings in a nonviolent way. Also, it encourages students that would otherwise be lost or troubled to have a creative outlet such as the arts. Not all the students like to play organized sports, so what happens to the students that prefer drawing, music, acting, or dancing over being on a sports team? In a district that doesn't seem to take the arts seriously, these students would be outcast, and this sense of separation is the very grounds for such things as hate. I know that we don't have all the money in the world, and there comes a point where we have to choose and cut, but you can't just ignore the students' wishes. You can't just ignore the fact that the teachers, who are considering the students' welfare, are fighting to keep the arts in their schools. We're all trying to find answers, and yet, as much as I have been involved, I've heard no solution. I would like to think that it's not a local problem, and yet I have heard nothing from the SB School Board about a solution on how we can all contribute to fighting for education, funding at the state or national level, and so the only conclusion that I can possibly come to, though many of us have expressed our opinions and concerns, is that the board has just tiptoed around the issue and has not listened. This is harsh, and I know it's harsh, but I don't know how else to express my deep regret and the regret of the teachers and many, many students that don't get to teach what they love or hear applause. And what will you tell this new generation of students that are deprived of that? At least I can tell them.
Thank you, Mrs. Lagerquist, thank you.
I'm not done.
Do you want to wrap up the last sentence so that other people can have their turn?
I would love to wrap up this last point, thank you.
Thank you.
At least I can tell them I fought for it. I fought for creativity, imagination, I fought for teamwork and for the ability to respect yourself. I fought for programs that promote peace, for being able to express the ability to perform. I can say I fought to try to find a solution, and even if it takes me to the state level. I can say to that student that I fought to keep the plays, the dancing, the singing, the ceramics, and all the artistic electives, and many of us here can say we fought, and I can look at that student and say, "Hey, don't blame me."
Thank you. Frank Anderson, followed by Ellie Iverson, followed by Lori Tingstrom.
Good evening. I'll try and keep this short and quick. First of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Smith on the hard work he's done. This is the best work I've seen in the budget area from this group in a long, long time, and I wish it had happened earlier before cuts were made in the last few years. If we'd made the same administrative cuts that we're now making, we may not have had to cut the arts before. I'd also like to thank the board for the support of the junior high electus program, it's very important to me. One of the other things that I see here is that all these items are shown as all-or-nothing items, it doesn't have to be that way. You can go partway on several of these things, including things like the ninth-grade class reduction could be done as a partial reduction instead of a full reduction. So, maybe add one or two people. There are other options as well in the San Marcos block schedule. Please work with the teachers to transition the San Marcos block so you have an equivalent funding as opposed to a draconian cut that would eliminate the block schedule. What you saw here tonight was a result of the block schedule. All these kids that went to Europe and performed in Carnegie Hall, that's a result of the block schedule. A lot of those programs would not have been able to be carried out the way they were without that block schedule. It's amazing what this opportunity is for those kids. Please do not destroy it. Thank you.
Ellie Iverson, followed by Lori Tingstrom, followed by Aisling Dunn. Sorry, Ellie Iverson?
Yeah.
Okay. Lori Tingstrom? Lori Tingstrom? Followed by Aisling Dunn, followed by Kiran Dunn.
Hi, it'll be short. I'm just here for my son, he's home, doing homework, he's a freshman at Santa Barbara High School, and he's in the band, and he just wanted me to, I get emotional, just to not fire Mr. Ortega. He's just, he loves him. He loved him the day that he got invited from Santa Barbara Junior High, when he was in the band there, to go perform with them at the football games, and he was hooked. And he just loves the band, and he doesn't want you to split him up either, he wants all of Mr. Ortega for next year. Thank you.
Aisling Dunn, followed by Kiran Dunn, followed by Ellen Lewis.
Hi, my name is Aisling Dunn, I'm part of the DP Concert Band and Marching Band, and I'm a freshman. And I'm here today because instrumental music is a really important and essential part of both my school day and my social life. Music has been proven to heighten people's test scores, so the NAMM Foundation did an experiment, and they found that students who had well-funded music programs did twenty-two percent better in standardized English tests and twenty percent better in standardized math tests than students who had poorly-funded music programs or no music programs at all. And music has also been proven to develop verbal and language processing skills. Stanford University did research in 2004, and they found that music develops the left side of your brain more fully, and you can retain verbal information better. So, according to that research, I have an easier time remembering what my teachers say in all my subjects as a result of being in band, and I can learn more in all my classes. And music also teaches really good study habits, as I'm sure everyone here who plays an instrument knows, you have to spend a lot of time on a piece of music if you want to memorize it or just learn it. And you can apply that devotion to any course, whether it's memorizing vocabulary for English or studying Spanish or anything. And band also creates this great community of totally diverse people, there's all different races, ethnicities, religions, gender, and everyone works together to make an amazing performance. And that's why music really does need to stay in our schools, because if it disappears, all of the amazing benefits that come with it will disappear as well. And hurting the music programs is only going to hurt our performance in all of our other subjects. Thank you.
Kiran Dunn, followed by Ellen Lewis, followed by Ann Crawford.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Kiran Dunn, and I'm a senior at Dos Pueblos High School and a member of the Concert Band and Marching Band. And one of the things I've learned in my high school career that's really stuck with me is just how essential music is to a student's education, and that it should be really strongly supported instead of being discarded or ignored in favor of funding less academically or socially beneficial programs. As was mentioned earlier, music is shown through studies to raise students' test scores in both English and mathematics. In 2006, the College Board noticed that students with a mathematical background, I'm sorry, with a musical background scored on average fifty-seven points higher on the verbal portion of the SAT and forty-three points higher on the mathematics portion of the SAT than students without a mathematical background, musical background, sorry, calculus homework. And it also encouraged students to say in school, students in schools with a music program have an average of a seventeen-point-three percent higher graduation rate than schools without a music program. And it also encourages students to get involved in other challenging and intellectually stimulating activities. For instance, at Dos Pueblos, we have members of the band who are involved in the teen program, the International Baccalaureate Program, the Engineering Academy, the First Robotics Team, and we have a few National Merit Scholars sprinkled in there. And so, just on the whole, music programs allow for high schools to essentially shine more because they have students that are just more developed in qualitative and quantitative areas of studies and also do well on standardized tests and attend higher-ranked universities. They're also taught to collaborate with people who are very different from them. In Dos Pueblos, we have members of the band with dissents ranging from Mexico to Germany to Korea with interests ranging from art to language to engineering. So, we all learn to come together and to produce a performance and this final product that shines. So, what we're asking is for you to prioritize in these budget cuts and to support programs that are in line with your mission statement, which is to provide professional instruction and guidance so that students will achieve academic excellence, understand and respect diversity, balance individual interests and civic responsibility, and take responsibility for their own individual learning and development.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ellen Lewis, followed by Ann Crawford, followed by Georgia Macy.
Hi, my name is Ellen Lewis, and I've been part of the Dos Pueblos Marching Band for four years and have been the drum major of this marching band for two years. When I first entered the marching band as a freshman, my freshman class, we entered a band that previously had thirteen horn, a horn line of thirteen students. And this year, we have twenty graduating seniors. And our, all of our students come, or the majority of our students come from the junior high, mainly at Dos Pueblos from Galita Valley. And to fill a spot of twenty graduating seniors is, it's a lot of work. We've had trouble filling spaces of ten or five, and although there are many incoming eighth graders, and we hope that all of them join the band, it will be very hard to build this program without the junior high electus programs. People in the band are very dedicated, and I'm very proud of all of them. We start our preparation for the coming year in the summer. We have sectionals over the summer, the section leaders of each individual instrument will call their section and arrange to help practice music together. And we start our band camp two weeks before school starts.
Thirty seconds.
Practicing marching and learning our music in preparation for our marching season. I hope that you all take into consideration how hard all the members of the music programs and elective programs have worked to achieve what they're doing in your decision on what to cut. Thank you.
Ann Crawford, followed by Georgia Macy, followed by Alexis Chasney.
Alexis is gone also. Hello, my name is Ann Crawford, I'm a parent of Ellen Lewis, and she's a senior, she said, and sophomore Peter Lewis at Dos Pueblos, they're both in the marching band. They began their music at Galita Valley Junior High under the wonderful instruction of Jeff Peterson. And I just want to point out a couple of points that have been said here. First, thank the excellent budget review, it was fantastic. And to address what Kate Parker said about the budget cuts, looking at at-risk students, I know Kiran mentioned that the band has a lot of strong academic students. He also mentioned that it's incredibly diverse, and that is a point that I want you to consider, that a band does have national merits and it has at-risk students, and there are kids in there that I have personally seen that would not have graduated if they didn't want to stay in band, and they did. It's hard to put a price on that. I also want to address that it's a strategic plan. Music, it's this ebb and flow that kills it. Like Ellen said, there were thirteen kids, now it's rising again. If we do what- If we do what Dr. Sarvas said is, oh, if the students sign up, we'll be there. I ask you to take a more strategic approach and look at it. It's fair, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, cut it. But give it three, five years to build momentum because it does have a huge economy of scale at the secondary level. Begins in the elementaries, it took huge cuts, that has to recover from that and move on and to get your money back in the secondary level.
30 seconds.
And lastly, I want to mention to the audience that it's been very encouraging here and your, your presence here is great, but the vote has not happened, so stay diligent. Thank you.
Georgia Macy? Okay. Terry Gostow followed by Hajar Sailors followed by John Hunt? Anybody in there?
Yeah.
Are you heard you?
Hi, my name is Hajar Sailors. I already spoke with the Madrigals, but now I'm speaking on just behalf of myself. I attend San Marcos High School and the two reasons I attend San Marcos High School are for performing arts and for the block schedule. My performing arts started with my public education in Santa Barbara, which started in seventh grade under the direction of Charlie Ortega. He taught me how to play saxophone. He helped me with jazz piano. And had it not been for him, I don't think in eighth grade, when we only had half of a music teacher, Mike Nun, who also taught at La Cumbra, that I would have continued on with band at San Marcos. I went through two years of band with Bob Noel's son and I enjoyed that a lot. And then I decided to switch to the choir program. Both programs have very dedicated, full-time teachers and they have allowed us to go to Carnegie Hall, as you heard tonight, Indianapolis, Florida, lots of different places to perform. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the block schedule. Two summers ago, I took Biology at City College to allow me to take more classes. The nice thing about the block schedule is we have eight classes a year instead of six. We'd have a lot more people in academic classes taking band and choir. That's why they only had 13 at, 13 people in the horn line at DP where we have, used to have 60 or 70 in the band because we have eight classes instead of six. We also have hour and a half classes. At City College, it was a three-hour lecture and a lot of the DP and Santa Barbara students could not deal with the three-hour lecture. For the three San Marcos students who were there, we had basically no problem with that. The other thing, with only half a teacher, we really wouldn't be prepared for Bachelors of Music and Bachelor of Fine Arts degrees. If we cut ninth-grade class sizes, we can really only get rid of a few English or math teachers. And we still have enough teachers to teach students so they're ready for Bachelors of Arts, Bachelors of Science degrees. But without music teachers, none of our students can ever hope to have a Bachelor of Music or a Bachelor in Fine Arts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I think the last name is Hunt? John Hunt? No? Another one? Okay. Lisie Belido followed by Olivia Harrell followed by Erica Seagun? Seagun? I'm sorry, I can't read this last name very well. Seagun, maybe? Lisie Belido?
Sheila.
No. Olivia Harrell?
Yes.
Great.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Harrell. I have two children in the Santa Barbara High School instrumental music program. And without the introduction to the music program at the elementary school level and then continued at the junior high level, my children would not be playing for the high school today. My daughter plays the alto sax, guitar, and a little flute. My son played trumpet in marching band, plays French horn in concert band, and trombone in advanced jazz band. I know that this would not have been possible without the three steps that each school level provides. I feel that especially the junior high level is so important because that is where many students, mine included, go through many changes mentally and emotionally as to where they fit and belong in the school system. And I am happy to say that my children and many others have found a place in the music program that has also taught them to read music, work as a team with others, and many other qualities that contribute in building up their character to be good citizens and good, good students and good citizens. We all play an important part in raising our children and I feel as a parent, I am doing my part in raising my children to be the best they can be. The teachers have done and are doing their part in educating all children and now it is your part. We as parents, teachers, and students are depending on you to do your part in keeping a full instrumental music program in each level of our schools, especially in the junior high level, and also to keep our teachers employed, especially Mr. Ortega. I hope that you will send a message to the community and that you as a board will always put the students and teachers first in your agenda and that the cuts you have to make will not be at the expense of our music students and Mr. Ortega. Thank you.
No? Gilda Seagun? Miguel Seagun? No. Okay. Mary Ann Henry? David Ramsdaller? Jeanne Thompson? Denise Adams? Followed by Carol Pasternak followed by Evan Bell. It's Denise Adams next though. Denise Adams.
Hi, my name's Denise Adams and I'm a parent at Santa Barbara High and as well as Cold Spring School. I wanted to share with you that in the process of seeing people being concerned about the budget cuts, I have a few things that you haven't heard about that I'd like to share with you. One of the concerns of a lot of parents out there isn't the cuts, it's how you can add additional resources to make more programs available. And in the process of talking to a lot of parents, receiving a lot of emails, in the past, many parents had objections to some of you as school board trustees, but in this process, they've realized, they, they fear you're not getting accurate information and that you're not getting the tools you need to make decisions and that there's a credibility gap. And some parents have asked, and, and this is your job, when you hire executive staff, you're hiring a lot of new people that don't have any historical perspective on our community. And there's a lot of money in this community that could be given. But when most of your executive staff have been in the Santa Barbara community less than six years, and as you've been heard on the San Marcos block schedule and other issues, you're not getting all the facts that you need because everybody you hire is basically new to our community. If you have credibility, just like we did at Santa Barbara City College where we had the 21st Century Campaign, I started with City College in 1980 as a volunteer. We went out to raise 21 million, we ended up with over 31 million.
30 seconds.
There's people out there willing to help our public schools and I know Ms. Parkerson and I have discussed it, Ms. Harder, Dr. Noel. But again, if you want to raise money from our community, it's not just music. We need a lot more in our public schools. We need a return of the seven-period day. As Ms. Harder pointed out earlier, the, the small English classes have been functioning as effectively as a homeroom. Parents want that homeroom brought back. They want a seven-period day. They want a lot more. And people in this community will fund it, but it's going to take credibility from the four people over here. And unfortunately, I hate to tell you, there's a real credibility gap. And I think that there's homework to be done. When we get credibility, I'm, I'm confident that the elementary district and the secondary district, the money will follow. But it's up to you and oversight, management, accountability can only happen from your chairs.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you.
Carol? Carol Pasternak followed by Evan Bell followed by Rebecca Sellers.
Carol Pasternak, I am the parent of a child at Dos Pueblos High School and a member of the faculty at UC Santa Barbara. And I'd like to follow up with the previous comment and say that it's great that we're trying to hang on by our fingernails and preserve electives and preserve ninth-grade class size reductions, but we are only hanging on by our fingernails. And I'd like to change our mentality on this approach from thinking about how unfortunate it is that the governor is asking for a $4 million cut to thinking about how outrageous it is that he's asking for a $4 million cut. And I ask you to bond together with other boards of education, to take action at the state level, and to make a major protest about the narrowness of the state vision, if there's a vision at all, including the fact that the schools are an investment in the economic future of our state. And in particular, from the point of view of Santa Barbara and the state as a whole, it is extremely difficult to recruit anybody to come and live here, to work here, to bring businesses here, if the schools are at the bottom of the United States rankings. And we are competing for the bottom. So please don't be satisfied with just hanging on by, by your teeth, but please fight for more.
Thank you. Evan Bell.
I did feel to mention real fast that the students went out and collected over 1,800 signatures for you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, you can pass that. Evan Bell followed by Rebecca Sellers followed by Ursula Farrell.
My name is Evan Bell. I'm a member of the Dos Pueblos Jazz Choir and currently in DP Spring Musical Beauty and the Beast. Hope you come see it. I feel it's important to mention to you guys that the arts are more than just electives to a lot of students. For some of us, it's, it's not just a hobby, it's what we want to do with our life. And we feel incredibly fortunate that we have these amazing programs at the high schools. And it's even more impressive that these programs can get by on such little funding. Our jazz choir has gone to the Monterey Jazz Festival, Reno Jazz Festival, North Texas Jazz Festival. We just got back from a summer tour in Europe for two weeks, $100,000, and we didn't get any funding for that. It costs each family $3,500 per person to go or two months of rent. My IB Music class started out with 35 students and it spiraled down to 13 because we didn't get textbooks for the first semester and students just couldn't handle it. If, if you feel you need to make cuts because not enough students are enrolling in a certain subject, I can tell you, put you at ease that we have more students than we can even fit in the arts programs. That's why we have auditions. If you feel like you need to make cuts across the board evenly, I feel you should know, I've had conversations with students that tell me that the arts programs are the only reason they're still in school. And in a couple of cases, a presence of the arts has saved their life. So it really wouldn't be prudent for you to cut those. It's, it's really necessary for you to keep those. Keep those. We're not just asking for your mercy, we're asking for your help.
Thank you.
And right now, I have to go because a recent, an old drama teacher of mine has fallen ill and I need to go make a car for her because of my love for her.
Rebecca Sellers followed by Ursula Farrell followed by Steve Wacker.
Hello. Just yesterday, I found out and looked at the 31-page document of suggestions. I don't know exactly what we're calling them. And I'm here to address the librarian issue. Librarian technicians do a wonderful job, but they are not the same and cannot take the place of a librarian. At Lachalina Junior High School, we have one librarian for 1,000 students, almost. She does far more than run the library and check out books. Our school librarian is in partnership with every single teacher at our school in providing the best education available for our students. A librarian is a credentialed teacher, a library tech is not. If we take the librarians, no longer can a team, teacher team teach with a librarian, giving students an opportunity for more individualized attention. And in addition, no longer can a student or several students go to the library for individual research during regular class time. Instead, all 33 or more students will have to go to the library, or not, and it doesn't matter where they are in terms of need. Before school and after school, our librarian keeps the doors open for students. With a library tech, that would be not allowed. If we wanted to continue that opportunity, we would need to pay a teacher a stipend for her, his or her time of library supervision. Librarians bring with them a knowledge of literature, both fiction and nonfiction, which library techs do not. A librarian can help a tough eighth-grade boy find just the right book on sports and the shy seventh-grade girl who loves animals. She, the librarian can help her find that six-book series on A Girl and Her Horse that just came in last week.
30 seconds.
In addition, our librarian collaborates with the classroom teachers and supports our lesson plans and units. The signup list for the library is long. Teachers know that no matter what subject they may be covering, our librarian will not have one or two, but 30, 40, or 50 books pulled and ready for them when they come into the library with their class. She takes the time to know what our assignments are and she helps our students with those assignments even when we, the teachers, aren't there. Now, I, I, I set it up for three minutes, but I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ursula Farrell followed by Steve Wacker followed by Marie Henderson.
Steve Walker.
Sorry, Steve Walker. Sorry, it looks like W-A-C-K, not W-A-L-K.
Good evening. Thanks for listening to all of us. I'm here on, my name is Ursula Farrell. I'm the librarian at Galita Valley Junior High School. I'm here to ask you to take the proposal off the list to replace retiring librarians with library technicians. As you've heard, particularly from the last speaker, there's just no correlation between the two jobs and the $170,000 in savings really are minuscule compared to what you get from a credentialed librarian. This memo that's up on the, on the screen right now is one that we sent to the school board and to all of you several weeks ago, not because we anticipated having to be here tonight, but because we wanted you to, we really wanted you to know what a bargain you're getting for the price of one credentialed teacher. And number eight definitely addresses Mrs. Harder what you, what your particular concern was. At Galita Valley, when I, I opened the library at 8:00, I have a huge line of kids waiting, sometimes rattling the door. At lunch, we have to sometimes turn kids away because we exceed our allotted amount of kids that there's actually physical space for. And after school, we're open again and lots of kids find that a place to go to finish up homework or to wait for their parents to get off work. So keep, so consider all of, all of that in your, in your looking at the list. Just a small vignette from my own personal workday. I just finished working with every single seventh-grade student on persuasive essay research. And then when it was time for the seventh-grade writing exam, they had all been prepared because that was the prompt, writing a persuasive essay. Part of that preparation included, included knowing a year ahead of time that that would, that's a project that I, my teachers wanted to do. So I bought books for that and databases for that last year, which if I'm going to be a traveling librarian, I won't really be in touch with, with my staff and that would be a real shame. So please don't cut us. Thank you.
Steve Walker. Followed by Marie Henderson.
Thank, thank you very much. I am, I'm a computer consultant and I work all the time. So I came out tonight, I have two kids, Hollister, Lachalina, and I'm a, you know, I went to school in Orange County in 66 when the price of gas was 62 cents. And I don't see any, well, he's using a pencil tonight, a couple pencils going around tonight. I'm a math major, physics major, and this is a very perplexing mathematical upside-down equation, which doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And if you could write down some equation, 10% of 66 cents is 6 cents, okay? The price of ga, the price of gas now is four bucks, all right? That's 40 cents. 120 homes sold in the average in this area each month at a median price of $1.5 million. Okay, so where, you know, and I'm sorry I'm late tonight, but I was having a shrimp, all-you-can-eat fest up at the Chi Mashed Casino. How do they do it? And where is the money going, okay? My property taxes have doubled since I owned a home in 1990, okay? I pay my, I can barely pay my gardener. But anyway, look at all these smart people over here. This guy's been looking at his notebook computer here all night doing some psychology stuff. I respect all this IQ here tonight. It's incredible, the amount of IQ, teacher dedication, it's unbelievable. I can't say enough about the teachers. They don't make enough money. You need to figure out some equation that Arnold Schwarzenegger is bending us all over. This is unbelievable.
30 seconds.
Where is the money going? I didn't have Lotto when I grew up in high school. I got a 1,500 on my SAT score. I didn't have any band classes, okay? And I'm a top student. What is going on here? This is unbelievable.
And finally, Marie Henderson. And finally, Marie Henderson.
Good evening. I want to first thank you for listening to the public, as I think they are giving you really good light on the facts. And I also am worried about the facts that come to the board members to make decisions on. I don't think that people are held accountable, and I'm very worried. I had the luckiness to be reading this article in the LA Times. The first school district since the 1960s is losing its accreditation, and it's because of fiscally unsound decisions. And it's alarming to me. It's alarming to me that a district here with this much intelligence, as he said, we sit here and we listen, and we, you're asked to provide facts, the facts aren't here, then we say we're going to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we take a long time to make decisions. My children are at the community academy, and I'm finally happy to say the academy is all together on the Lacoumbre campus after all these years of working hard to get that done. We sat here and went over and over how many nights of what accommodations needed to be made. Now my children are there. There's 140 children in grades K through 2. These are five- to seven-year-old children, being asked to use two toilets in 10 minutes. Isn't that adequate? I don't think so. We also have over 20 teachers on the first floor there being asked to use one toilet while they're off, on their break from the children. There was a line today of teachers standing there waiting to use one toilet. The other schools, Santa Barbara Charter School, has a portable toilet that holds numerous toilets, sinks, and flushing toilets. If there aren't enough toilets at Lacoumbre Junior High, we need to have that brought in for the children and the staff to use. It's not adequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And that closes, is that what I'm supposed to say, Mr. Price? That closes the public hearing. Okay. I do want to mention that we did send a resolution to the governor. We voted that we are not happy with these cuts. We don't like to do this either, and we would like to see a different budget. But we have our constraints here, too.
There's a motion on the table.
There are, there is.
All the questions.
Okay. The motion was, do we have to repeat this? Does anyone have it? Anyone have that?
It's going to take a second.
Would you like me to repeat my motion?
Sure, I was going to ask, yeah, if we had written it down, somebody had written it down, but if you can repeat it.
My motion was to remove, I moved to remove the junior high electives from the potential, list of potential program reductions, maintaining them up to 8.0 FTEs, and requesting that the staff bring back a further report and discussion on parity and master schedule.
And we had a second from Ms. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes 5-0. Well, this is a start. We are going to come back to this in our next meeting and make some more proposals, make some more motions, and go through this even more. Is there anything else? Anybody, is a lasting comment, last minute, because we are so far over. Yes?
Yes, I'm concerned of these reports of inadequate information that the board gets. And I was wondering if, I'm looking particularly at this issue that San Marcos teachers brought to the board.
Yes, the issues that San, the San Marcos teachers brought to the board. And I, did, did Sant, did those, any representatives of the campus have a chance to look at this, this paragraph here before this was presented?
I don't believe so, otherwise it wouldn't have been written in that way. In fact, the language was not used in any way to denigrate the block's schedule, and there's no intention here to dismantle the block's schedule. I would like to say something about it, though. The staffing ratio that is currently used was established many years ago. I don't have the date. I believe it was somewhere around 1999, 2000. Chris Robertson could tell us. We'll find out. It would be a major disruption to the school to try to bring staffing to parity within a one-year period. Based on recent discussions with the, with the school, I believe it may be possible to negotiate that parity over a two-year period. And in fact, that would be my recommendation. I mean, dismissing all of this language, it is still a simple fact that the current staffing formula will cost over half a million dollars more than it would cost to staff at another high school with the same number of students. And I don't believe it should be changed all at once.
Well, it just seems to me that, that the board needs to get a reformulation of this.
Well, why don't you cross all that out and say that the current staffing formula will cost $560,000 more to staff San Marcos than, than at a comparable-sized high school?
If you don't mind, Dr. Sarvis, I'd rather get that in writing.
I could certainly do that.
Yeah, because, and I'm really concerned when very, very sharp criticisms are made about the factual base that the board has for its decisions. And if this paragraph represents errors, then I think we need a new paragraph that, and perhaps it'd be a good idea to talk to the campus before it's written, so that we can get on one page.
I'd also like to make a comment about 9th grade class size reduction. 9th grade class size reduction cannot be achieved partially. You can eliminate English 9th grade class size reduction or eliminate math, but if you keep it, for example, in English, it means all 9th grade English classes, it means gate classes and college prep English. So the numbers shown are the numbers for math or English, but you can't go just partially there.
And I think that the item was very clear, the item that Mr. Smith wrote was very clear, that, that it's a coupled program.
Yeah, I think it was accurate language.
With one, you must have the other. Right.
You do have to have both.
You have to have, paired with two. So you can't say, okay, we're just going to reduce English, but we're not going to reduce math.
It could be math or, or science, as I recall.
That's exactly right.
Madam President, I wanted to ask another question. If it would be possible, when this, this whole package comes back, to have something pulled out that would let us consider and possibly vote on the analog to preserving the electives at the, for the arts, particularly at the junior high level, to have something at the high school level? Because I know at least one or two FTE were on that RIF list, and I, as a board member, would like the opportunity to vote to assure that that FTE stays in place and that Santa Barbara High School continues to have it.
Well, Mr. Dr. Noel, in, we will know the number of retirements, is that correct? And so we will be able to say whether...
Well, but I'm asking, I'm...
Because it's not a matter of person so much as it is...
Well, Madam President, what I'm trying to...
Well, for, the way we, we can't, for contractual reasons, we can't, I don't know that we can do that.
Well, we just, we just made a decision that basically was an instruction to the superintendent to delete something. And, and it seems to me that, that's a reflection of board priorities. And I would like to have the opportunity for the board to go on record about its priorities, about the music teacher at Santa Barbara High School.
You know what? I would agree with Dr. Noel, but I think that we need to talk about music at Santa Barbara High. We can't connect it to a specific person. And I know that the audience does not understand that, but when someone receives a reduction in force, it's based on their seniority, it's not based on the subject area that they teach in, and we are bound by contractual negotiations with the Santa Barbara Teachers' Association. So it sounds like a lot of doublespeak, but when the reduction in force notices go out, they are based on seniority, not on the subject area in which the teacher's teaching. And I see a head nod from Mr. Lane Wheeler, who is the president of SBTA. So I agree with Dr. Noel, let's, let's bring back, you know, impacts at the high school. Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. But I'll call the police if you want me to.
Sure, no problem.
We're adjourned. No, we're not adjourned, we take a break. We need a break anyways, and we'll call the police. Thank you. I went way beyond two minutes, didn't I? Madam President. Yes. Oh, you were in the middle of a sentence, too, I'm sorry. No, no, it's okay. If we could revisit item E1 just briefly, and that is, if, if we're talking about, and we obviously need more information from the administration at the second meeting, if we're talking about a phase-in plan at San Marcos High School to reduce staffing, if we're talking about retaining some percentage of the special ed coordinator, including class size reduction in junior high electives at 8.0 FTEs, or not beyond that, then we've exceeded that nexus that brings us to $4 million. We've not reached the $4 million mark, we would have to make more cuts. So I just want to throw that out there as we move into the next meeting.
Okay. So, Ms. Harder, what were the items that you said?
I'm not sure about the, yeah, what was the one you added in there? There was something... I didn't add anything. At the very beginning, when we were talking about the administrative cuts, the special ed coordinator, Dr. Sarvis, wants to reduce the amount of that cut.
Ah, right, right.
So that was $75,000. Then if you include...
No, it was 46.
Well, it would take $32,000 off that savings. It would reduce one of those positions to a 75% position.
Thank you, that's where I got the 75. But it still takes us beyond the nexus of $4 million. I just want to share. Yes, Ms. Parker?
And I just wanted, very quickly, I mean, I have, we can have lots of discussion next time round about the long-term additional analysis and long-term health, but I'm hoping that the cost of year-round schools can get added into that additional analysis and long-term health. Mr. Smith and I, we spoke briefly about that, but it is something that the board has asked about for a long time, and it would be good for us to have that information.
We'll put it in there. We won't have the analysis done by this time.
I know you won't have it, but I want it just added to the list.
Any other last comments?
Yeah, I didn't see anything in there about the transportation encroachment. I got the idea of going back out to bid. I'd sure like to see the transportation encroachment in there.
I'm, yeah, we can put the encroachment in there. I guess the issues would really have to deal with how we reduce encroachment. I mean, I mean, there's things that you can do, I think some of them have been in the past, in terms of working with your provider to increase walking radius. I don't know if this board wants to go down the parent pay, that's an option, you know, you can charge for... Parent pay, which is charging. You can do a number of things. Obviously, the bid is in there because, I put that in there for two reasons. One, even though the board's not legally compelled, they might want to, given that it hasn't been bid for a while, but it's all, obviously, at the board's discretion because we might be getting a good deal based on labor and fuel and everything else. But there are other considerations, and I think I point those out. One is that some of the other contracts we have with the MTD in terms of what they're doing for us, the fact that the Galita School District is providing a portion of transportation services that I think we pay in excess of $30,000 a year. So if we were going to bid it, and we've started to look at, we started to develop the bid specifications, we've had conversations with STA, Student Transportation of America, but if we were going to bid it, I'd highly suggest that we add those items as additive alternates that the board could get individual prices for, and then would elect whether they want to do A plus B plus C or just A. But once again, there is an element of risk that in the event that you bid it and the price is higher, you know, that basically weakens your negotiating power with STA, since, you know, we don't formally, we have a continuing service contract, there's no expiration unless the board determines there's an expiration, and they might come forward and say, well, hey, this is the true cost of doing business, we want, you know, to renegotiate. So it's something that I think we need to give a careful amount of consideration to.
I was particularly, when I look at these kinds of trade-offs, of what we're contemplating cutting, I would like to see on the table a fee system for student transportation. Parent pay, absolutely.
I can get you the data on parent pay. One of the issues that's difficult with, difficult to quantify with parent pay is that the range of fees across the state is across the spectrum, but there's a exemption for indigence, and the definition of indigence, indigence in parent pay transportation is about 15 criteria long. And so one of the issues, having dealt with this issue, is that it's very difficult to prove or disprove whether somebody's indigent based on this information, because a lot of it is confidential, and you can't compel them to basically release it. But why don't we do this? We'll bring back, you know, the program, what it would entail. It's really guesswork in terms of how much we would generate and what the subsequent reduction in encroachment, but we'll give it our best guess.
Well, we could look at other options as well. We could look at eliminating the subsidy on bus passes.
Yeah, I see that on here.
I mean, we could consider eliminating it altogether.
Yeah, that is a board policy, and, you know, a lot of districts don't have that.
And that's something we have...
We're tightening up.
But we have control over it. It's not like, it's not that we have to do this.
Yeah, that's correct.
Another thing, I had a very short list. It just, it just seems like only yesterday that this board was approached by the athletic directors and asked for three FTE for trainers. Not talking about the police thing. This is, it wasn't only yesterday, Dr. Sarvis, it was actually the day before yesterday.
It was the day before yesterday.
And, and in any event, I do remember it, and, and I just, I remember the feeling that, that I think my colleagues on the board had at the time, was high school district was rolling in money. It's kind of like, yeah, you know, this is, this is important, we should do it. High school district's no longer rolling money, and, and I think that, that that ought to be reexamined. And there's a good case for them, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but, but there's a good case for a lot of things we're going to be cutting. One second, if you'll just bear with me. I'm glad you clarified this, reduce physical, physical services. At the end, it was a contradiction, now I see exactly where that came from. Okay, thank you very much, I do appreciate the time, Madam President.
Well, this will be back on the 22nd of April for board action.
Okay. And I, for one, can hardly wait. At least one of us.
I think I have to go to Philadelphia that weekend.
Yes, Miss...
I just wanted to request that if any, and if we're adding any items to this list, that we get them ahead of time. If there are any more suggestions on things that should be put on this list, so that we have time to think about it, because I believe that on April 22nd, we're going to try to finalize some decisions. So it would be helpful to have lead time, so that we know what we are, what we're looking at.
Good suggestion, thank you. We're going to go on to E2, which is the facilities master plan update on implementation for LaCuesta programs. I see people here tonight. Thank you for coming so late.
Well, this is a follow-up to the facilities master plan, and in the facilities master plan, it was anticipated that the Los Alturas program would be moved off of the Lockalina campus, probably to this location, Ortega Street location. It was also... campus, probably to this location, Ortega Street location, it was also anticipated that some of the Santa Barbara High School students would be relocated to this campus. Now, of course, we wanted to do that in a safe manner, and there have been discussions about this, and Paul, would you like to briefly comment on those discussions before we ask Pat Salee to, go ahead?
Of course, the board directed staff to hold an ad hoc committee meeting with the LaCuesta staff, with Ms. Salee, and a variety of other people, just to make sure that we could put together a coherent plan, a phase-in, to make sure that this was both addressing the facilities master plan and any potential uncertainties for the future, and so, what you see now is the results of all of that, and I want to thank everybody who's here, who are here tonight, thank you for being here for our very exciting meeting, and, more importantly, thank you for the many, many hours that you put into all of this, so, Ms. Salee.
Thank you, Mr. Turnbull, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis, LaCuesta staff in particular. We have a tag team tonight, this has been a very collaborative effort, I'm going to cover just briefly, just recap what the board action was last December 4th, just over four months ago, you asked us to come back in four months, and we missed it by four days, but, pretty good. A little bit more about the process than Kathy Abney, the principal, and Mitch Torina, the counselor at LaCuesta will cover, just give you an overview of LaCuesta, because it's very important to the locations and instructional program, et cetera. Then, Paul Turnbull will talk about the Phase 1 proposal for the next school year, as it relates to the Ortega site, as we call it, which has now been vacated, because the community academy has moved over to La Cumbre, yay! We also planned out the next two years, in a general sense, there'll be a lot of monitoring in the first year, so those next two years may well change, but we, as a group, really thought this through in all the aspects, and then finally, we'll talk about next steps. So, with that, I'll just dive in, this is a summary of the action that you took four months ago, the full text is in the board letter, in essence, first and foremost, to ensure a safe program, that's the case at all campuses, secondly, to move the two Los Alturis classrooms at La Colina somewhere appropriate, potentially Ortega, that really helps the La Colina site, which is the, has the highest enrollment of the elementary schools, and has some 250 open alternative students there as well. Third, as Phase 1, consider moving a small number of students from the Nopal-Santa Barbara High site somewhere, potentially Ortega. Four, retain a school-based program at each high school, because generally, the kids go to the school that is nearest to them, and we have a slide that addresses that, and then lastly, appoint an ad hoc committee to study this and return to the board. So, we did have two very lengthy, very involved meetings with district staff, various LaCuesta staff members, each site, San Marcos DP, La Colina, Santa Barbara, each site was represented, we had staff from all different levels, and it was really very productive meetings, and the kinds of issues we talked about included safety, direct instruction, classrooms, and how we might do that, and ways in which we can improve collaboration between teachers, independent study, a new bridge program that Kathy and Paul will be talking about, special education, the sort of nuts and bolts, administrative office and support staff, and those sorts of things that are also very important, and then transportation issues. So, we spent a lot of time talking about all of these from all different directions, and we think we've come up with a Phase 1 plan that will deal with them effectively. So, with that, I'm gonna let Kathy Abney go through the mission statement, and just walk you through sort of the typical LaCuesta student. I'm not proficient with clickers. Okay, as part of the work that we've been doing, kind of over the last several years, we've been revising our mission statement towards, you know, just creating a better LaCuesta, and also, just moving towards the direct instruction piece and a lot of other things, and we think it's really important to provide each student with a diverse education, a safe supportive environment that promotes self-discipline, motivation, and academic excellence, and a school-community partnership that supports students in becoming resilient, self-sufficient, successful adults, and that's, that should be the mission of all of our schools, and we find oftentimes that our kids particularly don't have those kinds of connections, and so, we have to create those connections for them. Our goals for starting to consolidate some of the LaCuesta campuses, and to start, you know, in a very small way, but to bring teachers together, to provide opportunities for students, probably, you probably are aware, because I've stood up here and talked to you about it before, but right now, we've got two teachers on each campus who are delivering the entire core instruction, so, you know, every kid has to take English, and every kid has to take algebra, and every kid has to take life science, because that's what we're offering on that particular campus. With even four teachers on a campus, we could offer a minimal master schedule, but we could actually have an English teacher that offered, I don't know, four different levels of English, or four different types of English classes, we could have a history teacher, science teacher, a math teacher, we would have an ability to offer at least a minimal master schedule. Increased course offerings follow with that master schedule, teachers able to teach in their credentialed areas, rather than having to be jacks and jills of all trades, I have amazing teachers, but I have to tell you, you know, if you're credentialed in math, and you're also teaching science and economics, and, you know, and PE, and all of those kinds of things, you are really, you're stretched. So, it, you know, really would create a great opportunity for these teachers to be more effective with students who need very effective teachers. Faculty members having an opportunity to collaborate and team teach, lots of great cross-curricular instruction can be done when you've got, you know, a strong teaching team that can work together, a school culture based on tolerance and acceptance, and opportunities for student leadership and activities, big dream, that we really want to have a student, you know, an ASB opportunity, opportunities for students to take on leadership roles, we have lots of leaders, some of them aren't necessarily leading for the most positive at this point in time, but I think directed appropriately, they could be. Increased delivery, efficiency in delivery of support services, includes counseling services, includes YSSs, includes special education services, just administrative services, I drive to two campuses minimum every single day, I'm in classrooms every day, and I spend more time in the car sometimes than I do in classrooms, and so, you know, a lot, efficiency is an issue. Increased access to community resources, down here, opportunity for speakers, public library, field trip, walking field trips, when I taught myself on the Santa Barbara campus in the continuation, I used to walk kids to the courthouse, and we would sit in the courtroom and observe, you know, trials and process, community service and mentoring opportunities, so, those are some of the goals that we have for starting this process as kids come together. If you've never driven it, here's my school, and I'm located down here on Nopal Street, and then I have, Los Alturis is out on Foothill Road, and San Marcos, LaCuesta San Marcos is on Hollister, and then all the way out to Dos Pueblos out on Alameda Avenue and Galita, so, there's days I do a 40, 45 mile round trip, so, it's not terribly efficient, but it's, that's LaCuesta. I had to look at this thing three times, I actually made this graph, and I had to look at it three times again to figure out what I was trying to say. There's some concern about bringing kids together and making sure the kids are safe. I need you to know that right now, today, on my Los Alturis campus and my San Marcos campus, we have kids that live in and hang out with, kids that are Rock Creekers, Galita kids, East Side kids, and West Side kids, we've got all four of those Santa Barbara gangs, if you would, on the Los Alturis campus and the San Marcos campus, and those kids are coexisting fine. On the, was it the 20th of March, we took 94 kids to the Aquarium of the Pacific in Long Beach, I had San Marcos and DP on the same bus, and we didn't have a peep of a problem. So, you know, these kids really, they want to be in school, they want to be successful. So, what this graph is showing you essentially is, down the left-hand side, those are the campuses that the kids are on, so if you add it all the way across for Dos Pueblos, there's 37 kids total enrolled on the Dos Pueblos campus, but the campuses by zip code, which are down here on the bottom, that they should be attending are Santa Barbara, or San Marcos, or Dos Pueblos. So, the DP kids predominantly come from Dos Pueblos, but we've got four Santa Barbara High kids and a San Marcos kid. At Los Alturis, we have 20 Santa Barbara High kids, nine San Marcos kids, and six DP kids, and the 93105 zip code is the one that's not 100% accurate, Dr. Noel, I apologize, I just kind of looked at the map, and that one, we probably have to split, but, the LaCuesta San Marcos kids, 16 of those kids live in the Santa Barbara High School attendance area, seven of them are San Marcos High School attendance area, nine of them are DP kids, and at LaCuesta-Santa Barbara predominantly, that's the campus that fills up first, and so, 35 of those kids are Santa Barbara High School kids, three from San Marcos High School, and one from Dos Pueblos High School. So, we have kids across the map on all of our campuses, and I think, you know, the point of that is that kids are kids, and we went to the Aquarium of the Pacific, and we looked around at the other kids, and we said, oh, those kids look just like our kids, teenagers are teenagers. So, student profile, our kids are seeking success in a smaller learning environment, more responsive to their needs, this works for our kids, to be in smaller classrooms, where they get to know their teachers, where they don't get lost in the big mix. An opportunity to get back on track for graduation, majority of our kids come, get caught up, go back to their home high schools, it is, it is a tradition in this community, particularly at Santa Barbara High School, to walk down that hill, but it's a tradition in this community for these kids to graduate from the high schools that their moms, dads, aunts, uncles, brothers, you know, everybody graduated from, and I support that, I think that's important. Some kids choose to stay and graduate with us, some kids don't have a choice, because they're so far behind, they can't get caught up, but we really do provide those opportunities for kids. Our kids are diverse, they range from kids that are unit deficient, to those kids who are co-enrolled at Santa Barbara City College, because they, they're working on their college thing while they're, while they're also going to high school, we've got kids that are working to support themselves or their families, we have kids that are just, they were truant kids, that's why they got behind, and they finally figured it out, and they want to graduate, we've got kids that have lost parents, that have overcome chronic illness, kids that are homeless, we've got kids that I know of personally right now, that, we've got five or six homeless kids, that we're placing very strategically, based on wherever their, you know, their homeless space is, and we've got kids, not very many, but kids that are on track to graduate, but are looking for a chance to go to City College, and also do high school. So, our student profile is across the map, I mean, you can't, there is no typical LaCuesta kid, and it's certainly not a gang kid, particularly, so, I'm gonna turn this over to Mitch, and that's our LaCuesta-San Marcos kids at the museum, not the Museum of Time, it's the Jewish Community Center here in town, on a field trip.
So, one of the concerns that we hear is the safety of our students, and part of what we address as far as safety is the climate and the culture, we have a very specific assessment and intake process that we use when we get referrals from each high school, I do that personally with each parent and student who wants to come, we remind them that coming to LaCuesta is a choice, and that the whole purpose of them to come to us is to become credit, caught up on credits, and they're currently credit deficient, that's the main reason for the referral. Our teachers and our staff have a zero tolerance policy for anything that becomes unsafe, whether it's harassment of another student, gang representation, or just mad dogging, and we have a very strict way of getting to them, saying that if they don't want to be with us, it's part of that choice, part of the choice of coming to us and becoming credit, caught up on credits, is the idea that they have to behave and be a good student with us. Like Ms. Abney said, the majority of students are not gang affiliated, and that's something that I'd like to, you know, spend some time on demystifying, probably, at each site, though we have all students representing from different gangs in our community, maybe there's one or two in a classroom of, or two classrooms of 40, and so, there isn't a strong representation, in fact, I'd say less than 10% of our students are gang affiliated, and so, if, when we're doing an intake and assessment, if we have a gang representation disclaimer, much like El Puente does, is that any gang activity, any gang representation, or anything that represents themselves as being affiliate, or in response to some other student who is affiliated to a crosstown gang, that that's not going to be tolerated, and they will be asked to return to their home school, where they will not have a chance to be caught up on credits. The faculty and staff have a better opportunity to collaborate on specific students, when you have two teachers looking at perspective of how to handle a student, and maybe some safety issues, that's not as good as having four students, plus your counselor, plus your community liaison, and your administrative staff to have that kind of collaboration. We want to provide a support system specifically for all those other things beyond school, community support resources, and we'd be able to better do that on a single site. We have talked to our teachers and our staff about monitoring classrooms and bathrooms and common areas, because of the way we are configured now, I think there's only one site that has a bathroom within view, all of our students have to now leave the classroom and go across the campus to find facilities. Continued support from the law enforcement and probation, we have a really good relationship with any student who is currently involved in probation, for them to support us, and they come to the site when we need to, they actually go to the homes if we see students are becoming habitually truant, or not attending class on a regular basis. And then, of course, being close to the district office, we have more access to district resources and our colleagues, and the resources here that the administration can give, and this is probably our typical LaCuesta student, I'm not sure if she'd be accepted in a traditional classroom at a high school, but she now is currently back at the Dos Pueblos campus, doing fine, and are ready to graduate. Thank you.
Spirit of Ward went there last year on San Marcos. She also got a component of Alex.
All right, so, when we, when we thought about this, and we neglected to mention that Mrs. Parker was also on the, on the committee, so, the board was represented, my apologies. When we thought about this, we thought about a phase-in that made sense, that respected the facilities master plan, and the fact that all of this, you know, in the environment that we're currently in, means that there are multiple decisions. So, for example, we're looking at the current year, '07, '08, right down the middle, and the configuration involved, so if you, in the, in your, the back of your head, just keep that mental image of the map spread across Santa Barbara through Galita, you have two teachers at pretty much every site, as we go down, you have three independent, independent study teachers who are spread across each of the entire high school district, and then you have Middle College as an adjunct. What we're proposing for Phase 1, the far-right corner, is that we take a look at what the master plan actually recommended, that we remove Los Alturis, being especially high school students, off of the La Colina campus, because it's important that we try to maintain space and like populations on the junior high school campus. If we move those two classrooms, and therefore, their two teachers with them, we could also move to make, to make it workable, and actually bring people together, two classrooms from the Santa Barbara High School campus, two direct instruction, not independent study, but direct instruction, because there's actually modernization that will be happening, moving those two classrooms over here would actually help us save money in portables, et cetera. So, now we have four classrooms total, four teachers total, as a recommendation down on the Ortega Street entrance. There's no change, as you can see, all the way down the line, the one thing that we would need to address is what would happen sort of behind the scenes with any particular referrals on the Santa Barbara High Campus to LaCuesta in particular, that was a question raised by Mrs. Parker, what does the program look like? It's nice to know that a thing continues in a different place, but does that mean that we sever all connection with the comprehensive school, and any independent study, or any credit recovery programs? And so, Mrs. Abney and Dr. Caprino have spoken about a bridge program specifically that would identify ninth graders and 10th graders, to make sure that we actually do have the same amount of support for them on their campus, before they would actually get to a point where they would need a referral to the LaCuesta program. Phase 2, you can see right down the middle there, so we would keep the Phase Two, you can see right down the middle there, so we would keep the first two classes. So DP, well, let's just go all the way up to Galita. DP would stay exactly as-is. So we're not thinking about moving anything there, especially because of transportation issues and a variety of other things. We want to make sure that we have a presence in Galita, and Dr. Sarvas has been very clear about that, as has the board. The suggestion would be then to move, so you have La Cuesta, excuse me, Santa Barbara and Los Alturas already. It would be then to move the two San Marcos direct instruction classes. Am I right? Or am I ahead of myself? Direct instruction classes. So now we're up to three classrooms, six teachers, and again, we're increasing the master schedule. It's important to remember that all the way through that first year, oh-eight, oh-nine, we're simply monitoring. How is it actually going? Are the kids getting along? Is the instruction more comprehensive and cohesive? Are they able to, they being the teachers, able to collaborate in a better manner? They're right next door and we can make sure that all of these things are as smooth as possible. It's also important to mention that during that year, we'd be looking at transportation, making sure that we're not letting out at a midday, what we know is a traditional minimum day schedule, so that it's just afternoon, and we have El Puente and we have La Cuesta letting out at the same time. Mrs. Abney's worked with the MTD to talk about that. Right. It's important that, we say it early, though. So now we have six teachers and three classrooms altogether, or six classrooms altogether, excuse me. Again, you can see pretty much all the way down, no change. The only thing that we would be doing then is the same thing we did the previous year at the San Marcos High School campus. We would then be looking at a bridge program, which is a replication of the bridge program from Santa Barbara High School the year before. So everything that we do that's new is an addition, is replicable from the year before. And then Phase Three, and it's also important to realize that any one of these things, any one of these columns, needs yeses all the way down to trigger moving to the next phase. If there's a hitch with instruction, if there's a hitch with transportation, a variety of other things, then we stay and we monitor until it's fixed, until we're satisfied and the board is satisfied, and then we can move on. And then in the final year, so you now have Santa Barbara, Los Alturas, and San Marcos campuses all together. We have no change as far as DP, as I mentioned before. The independent study teachers from Santa Barbara would then move over to Ortega. So now we have a full complement, everybody on the same campus together. DP, we're taking a look at the potential of altering that program for ninth and tenth graders in the same way we did for Santa Barbara, then San Marcos. Again, we're keeping the small school number there, we're keeping the staff there. It's based on best practices that we basically put together from the previous two years. And then finally, Community Day School. If all goes well, stressing if all goes well, Community Day School would potentially move off the La Calina campus to a site at the Ortega entrance, separate from the high school students.
I was just going to ask, how do you keep them separate?
We have upstairs where the typical Community Academy, or what was the Community Academy, is upstairs, and then the CDS students would be downstairs. Two separate entrances, staff members, the whole bit. Question?
You can keep going, I have a question for when you get to the end.
Okay. And then, I don't know if, we've already mentioned a couple of these things. Transportation is an issue. MTD is obviously the partner that we would work with. They've got a great program with El Puente right now and they're very flexible. Ridership, for the most part, is the issue. It's important to remember that the MTD actually wouldn't be as big an issue as we think it is, because Los Alturas, for example, if you recall the numbers, is predominantly composed of Santa Barbara High School students. We would be keeping Eastside students on the Eastside. Santa Barbara High School students, for the most part, that first year would be here, again, keeping East students on the Eastside. It's really a very small number of students we're talking about. Administrative services. If during the modernization, we move those two classes from the Santa Barbara High Campus to Ortega, it would be very beneficial to move the administration and counseling offices from the Santa Barbara High Campus over to Ortega as well, making sure that we have everybody in the same place. The highest need would be here, it wouldn't be back on the campus where we would have two independent study classes. Again, special education services would increase. We would be able to actually start offering far more special education services to students. Itinerant teachers would go down, that's highly important. And then our space issues. As you know, the spaces available on the upstairs and the downstairs of Ortega Street actually are a perfect fit for everything that we've thought of through all three phases. So all of those things work. We tried to frame this in terms of the master plan itself. Just square footage, people, location, exits, transportation, the whole thing. And so now it's essentially a discussion for the board. And the toilets are all, it was a bonus that the toilets of the Community Academy were not for tiny little people, but for actual big people, so. So our next steps. We're looking for input, obviously, this is the first go-around. We were asked to put together an ad hoc committee, this is the report from the committee for you to consider. We have a return for final action at a future date. It's timely that we're talking about facilities and funding and a variety of other things. And then, as you can see, we're looking at all of these things included, so with funding. We've got improvements at the Ortega site, we've got I-98 and Measure V. And whether or not that's an issue, Mr. Hetjank wrote a memo specifically to that end about three weeks ago? About three weeks ago, so we're satisfied there. The retention of necessary small school funding is satisfied. And the monitoring and timeline and board updates, that's the biggest thing. We would want to come back to as frequently as possible on a per semester basis at the end of each semester, and then that way you know frequently how things are going. And then we can discuss future phases in the current phase. And that would be it.
I had a question regarding the students who are at Los Alturas, who are primarily from Santa Barbara High. Is there, is there a reason why they are attending at Los Alturas instead of at Santa Barbara High School? So would there, is...
Santa Barbara High is our largest referer as far as students are concerned. And we always fill up there first, and Los Alturas is the one we always fill up last as a general rule. And so when we have overflow from Santa Barbara High School, Los Alturas is where they generally go. They have devil of time getting there, it takes them about two or three buses to get there, but...
So the students aren't really opting to go there? They're going there because of, because they can't...
Yes and no, it's interesting. Some kids come and say, "I want to go to Los Alturas. I know I shouldn't stay on this campus, I know that, you know, Milpa Street is too, you know, too beckoning, that's the reason I was truant." Some kids choose to go to Los Alturas. Other kids, you tell them that, you know, the only place you have a slot available is Los Alturas, and they say, "Fine, I'll stay at the high school." Other kids don't care one way or the other. So when we fill up at Santa Barbara, we take a waiting list, we place kids at Los Alturas if they're willing to go, and as we have openings at Santa Barbara, we say, "Hey, you know, do you want to go to Santa Barbara, you want to stay at Los Alturas?" They most often opt to stay at Los Alturas if they're already there. It's generally, it's not a punishment kind of thing, it's just, it's essentially when we run out of room at Santa Barbara, Los Alturas is our next flow.
Part of my question was based on whether moving those students to Ortega Street would sort of contradict or go against what the reason they were choosing to go to Los Alturas in the first place?
The majority of them would choose, the majority of them would prefer to stay at Santa Barbara.
And that was going to be my second question, which is, I think it's probably especially true at Santa Barbara High School, but it may be true at the other high schools as well, that a lot of students want to be on the campus, the comprehensive high school campus.
There is definitely something to be said about that. However, we're finding that it's very difficult oftentimes to be on the comprehensive high school campuses, not only from an academic standpoint, but because that is their home high school, they have a hard time realizing they're, it really isn't their school any longer, that they're, you know, they're still their students, but they're on loan to us. And when they are at La Cuesta, they are not welcome to go on to those other campuses, you know, on through their home high school campus to go visit their friends or to do anything else. And it's, I mean, tell a teenager that there's an invisible line there that they can't cross, it's a constant battle from that standpoint. And that's a difficult one. So I think that there definitely are some kids that are, you know, they would have that issue of not wanting to change. But what, part of what we're trying to create is that school culture that gives them, and there's continuation schools up and down the state, that are, you know, kids choose not to go back to their comprehensive high schools because there is such a great community feeling and such a great culture at the, you know, at the continuation school. So, you know, there's the academic piece, there's the cultural piece, there's the student activity piece, there's things that we can't offer our kids right now, or that we have to offer them artificially by putting them on four buses and bringing them together for a theatrical performance, that, you know, eventually we'll be able to offer them in a more consolidated site. And I think that we won't have trouble enrolling this campus. I, you know, I firmly believe that. Because those kids that don't want to go to Los Alturas just stay at Santa Barbara, and yet we're fully enrolled at Los Alturas and Santa Barbara. So, yeah, there will be those kids that choose not to come, but there's lots of kids out there that absolutely could benefit from what we have to offer in small classes and more individual instruction, and they will come. So I'm not concerned about not getting kids to enroll, and I think that they will find that there is, you know, that there is a fine instructional program and a great place where they can blossom as student leaders, where they maybe don't have that opportunity right now. So, call me crazy, but maybe I got rose-colored glasses, but I really believe that. So I don't think we're going to have trouble enrolling the campus at all.
My question, my concern, or, I'm not, maybe concern may even be too strong of a word, because I'm not convinced that it would come to pass, but I'm just questioning the students who stay, and because, for example, Santa Barbara High School is one of the schools and, as well as Dos Pueblos, where the students, and Dos Pueblos would pretty much stay, so that wouldn't be the issue.
Right.
But at Santa Barbara High School, that's a site where the majority of the students there are from that home campus.
Right.
And it suggests to me that there's a desire to remain on the home campus. And my concern wouldn't be that the Ortega site would lack students.
Right.
My concern would be whether those students who would normally have enrolled in the onsite La Cuesta would then be less likely to enroll, and as a result, not engage in sort of getting back on track in terms of units, and would we lose those students?
Couple, you've got a couple of questions there. First of all, I don't think that they would not go to Ortega. I think that being in that part of town is important to them. So I think they would go to Ortega. The other piece of that is the pilot bridge program, and we're calling it a pilot program because we haven't done it in this district before, but it, you know, it's a ninth and tenth grade program, we have nothing for ninth graders right now. But it could capture those tenth graders, and the majority of our kids are tenth graders. So the kids that just absolutely didn't want to come to Ortega could be in that pilot program as a tenth grader and have the same kinds of opportunities. Mark and I have talked about it, and it'll look very similar to some of the things that we do with some other components and study skills and interventions and kinds of things. But the idea of where they might have like a four-hour core, you know, with the same two to four teachers, and then they would go out and do PE and an elective kind of thing. So they'd be enrolled in a full six-period day on the high school campus, but that could be the kind of intervention piece where the four-hour core would act almost like a continuation school, and then they would go out for, you know, for the other two pieces. So I think that that's a piece of why we're looking at, you know, putting a bridge program into place to catch those kids that don't want to come. Because we don't want to abandon them either, and really it would, if that goes as well as I think it's going to go, using their FTEs, I think we can build that into a really powerful program to catch these ninth graders before they really start failing. So there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of opportunity, which is aside from this thing, to really start creating some programs, to catch these potential dropouts as ninth graders, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, Madam Chair, I want to note that we've hit the 10:30 mark, so I'm hoping that when we resume this item, we'll go to, straight to F2?
We'll, sorry, what's...
I'm sorry, Mrs. Abney.
That's okay.
I, yeah, I'm reluctant, but we may have to.
Here's my question.
Okay.
It really has to do with the bridge program.
Uh-huh.
You gave some more explanation of what it was when you were addressing Ms. Cordero. So they would do their core program with La Cuesta teachers?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
The La Cuesta teachers are leaving the Santa Barbara High School campus, but we are going to leave, it actually would be the Los Alturas CDS number, but that doesn't make any difference. Right now, San Marcos is called San Marcos Continuation, and DP is called Dos Pueblos Continuation. So we would take that Los Alturas name and number, move it to Santa Barbara High School, and it would be renamed Santa Barbara Continuation.
Okay.
That number would be the pilot bridge program at this point, because that would be the campus that would, we'd be consolidating two sites, we want to keep the necessary small school funding. So that Santa Barbara continuation would be the pilot bridge program. It would not be La Cuesta teachers, it would be Santa Barbara High School teachers. And I wouldn't be running the program, it would be Mark's program, but I, you know, he's been in court in community schools, so he knows alternative programs. But he and I would work together and collaborate on how best to make that work as a transition, not only for his kids, but maybe to get his kids then to us when it was time and if it became time. So it's a work in progress.
And I appreciate the fact that it's an innovation to try and retain the small schools funding. I appreciate the fact that it is reaching out to ninth graders and also creating a special niche for your large group, your tenth graders. I'm really concerned about putting a comprehensive high school principal in charge of another program on their campus without support from an assistant secondary superintendent. That's a real concern for me.
Sure.
But I really appreciate the innovation involved and the potential involved, and I would really want to explore it. But that, just like I said, it's a concern. And I think it's a great move to try and retain the small schools' money.
And I will tell you that in Ventura, right now, they are doing it at Ventura High School and at Buena High School very successfully. At Buena High School, because the principals really embraced it. Not so successfully at Ventura High School because the principal has not embraced it. But it can be done, it can be done very successfully. One of the assistant principals who's funded, you know, with that money would probably be, you know, and again, I am certainly available as a resource, you know, to help make that happen, too.
Would we be able to, what kind of money are we talking about? When you're talking about small schools' money that would be devoted to that pilot program?
I don't have any idea. It would be whatever portion of the necessary small school funding, it comes out of the pupil retention block grant.
Okay.
And right now, they're getting...
That particular school?
Yeah.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand dollars right now.
So what would that eighty thousand dollars be used for?
Right now, it's being used for...
No, 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 not now. For that bridge program, what would it be used for? Because obviously you're using teachers who are already on...
Right. I'm guessing that it would be used for the administration, the, you know, probably an assistant principal that would have, you know, direct oversight over, you know, that would be the, you know, the mentor, the, you know, there would be an assistant principal on the campus that would have direct supervisory oversight over this particular program to make sure that the appropriate students, Santa Barbara High's got a great assistant principal right now that refers kids to us. He knows the profile, he knows, you know, what kids to look for, he would actually be excellent. So somebody who's got, you know, that heart for the out-risk kid, who knows, you know...
And then would these students be taking their classes together? And then would these students be taking their classes together, their core classes together? Would they have to be scheduled together?
I don't think they have to be scheduled together. I'm guessing it would be thirty to sixty kids, probably, and, you know, over the course of four periods, they wouldn't necessarily have to be together.
Okay.
No. And that would be something that, again, that we'd have to sit down and, you know, it's, it's very preliminary, but it's absolutely very doable, so.
And then, so you would envision the money, the eighty thousand dollars, or whatever it happens to be, being spent on being a coordinator, doing oversight for that group of kids?
For the at-risk kids. It part, it's kind of part of the truancy piece, part of the at-risk piece, part of the, you know, the AB 1802 counseling funds, you know, probably one of the, that, one of those counselors would be assigned to the same group of kids. So I don't, I don't see it as hiring teachers, because, you know,
No, no, no.
it would be using the teachers on the campus, and, and they, and, you know, the English teacher might only be teaching, you know, two periods a day with these kids.
Right, I understand that. But there is a precedent for using that small schools' money in that way?
Well, there's also a problem in that our, our students don't always come in neat packages of thirty-five.
I understand.
And, and they trickle in through the year, and the enrollment increases, so part of that money would be used to supplement that staffing, so that you could have smaller class sizes, essentially.
Okay.
I didn't know that. I'm not the budget lady, sorry.
No, I'm supportive of, you know, the overall plan.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I was just worrying about how to staff that.
Right.
And if it's staffed in the regular ratio.
Sure.
Uh, then we're gonna end up with, with overs, well.
Right.
Our numbers will be off.
Right, okay.
I, I'd just add some clarity. The necessary small school funding, when it was rolled into ABA 25 as part of the pupil retention block grant, was originally an add-on to the revenue limit. So the origin, the history, is unrestricted, so you can
Okay.
If that makes you feel any more comfortable.
And I just, and nobody's asked the question, but I do want to tell you just really briefly about my conversation with Sherri Fisher at MTD. El Puente uses MTD. They actually walk their kids to Smart and Final, and a staff member rides that bus. Well, I met with her, and right down here where Lincoln School used to be at the commuter lot, that's where that little electric vehicle goes. It's a completely separate bus from the one that El Puente takes, and, and it goes east side and west side. We're looking at doing probably a nine-to-two schedule. We know teenagers don't do early mornings, and we don't do early release days. We don't have minimum days. So, you know, we won't, we don't do, you know, we, that won't be an issue. So we're thinking maybe a couple of late start Fridays as rewards to kids, where, you know, they would come to school at ten, and teachers could use that time for staff development. But probably a nine-to-two schedule. Cecilia doesn't have concerns about kids in the mornings. Parents drop them off or they get themselves to school, but then we would walk the kids, and I told Sherri, if I had more than three kids that were getting on that bus, that I would have a staff member on the bus. We'll walk the kids down to the commuter lot, pick up the bus. That little shuttle doesn't even go into the circle at MTD. It stops outside, you stay on the bus with the kids, you do the west-side loop, and then you come back to the commuter lot, and then you walk back to the school. She says that the bus drivers at MTD vie for the route that El Puente kids are on, because they're the best-behaved kids on any of their routes, because there's a staff member there. So they have had not incident one with the El Puente kids. And so I was thrilled to find out that it was two separate vehicles that we could use, that they're on a bus, and we, we could use the, the electric one. And for next year, if you do approve this Phase One, that particular thing, little vehicle also goes to the east side. Most of my east side kids walk in, but if they felt like they wanted to ride, they could also pick it up, and it goes that way from the commuter lot, and the same deal stands. If I've got more than three kids getting on that thing, there will be a staff member on there, and if it's me, then it's me. But, you know, I think that, that, that's part of the safety commitment that, you know, that we need to make. So I just wanted you to be assured that, that MTD is, they're excited and they're thrilled to work with us, and they had a solution the, the minute I walked in the door. They've got a completely separate vehicle for us, so that, that's pretty cool, so.
I have a question about
Yeah.
Do, are you planning on having a cafeteria?
Um, there is a cafeteria facility here, and yes, I would love to be able to use it. It's got a point, pay, point thing, you know, so
Point of sale.
Thank you, point of sale, thank you. It's got a point-of-sale thing, and so, yes, I would love to be able to have access to the cafeteria. On two of my campuses, the kids actually can access the cafeteria. Los Alturas, they bring the food in, and we feed everybody, and we pay for that, because everybody gets fed, because it's a junior-high campus. And at Santa Barbara, that hasn't had a kitchen for three years, we bring in sandwiches every day, which is just, I mean, it's boring. You know, it comes from the Santa Barbara Junior High cafeteria, which they're marvelous, but I don't have any way to keep food warm. So I'm looking forward to having cafeteria.
Uh, is
Madam President, I, I have a early morning flight to Virginia. I'm gonna have to leave, but I'd like to make a comment
Mm-hmm.
before I do, and it's really a request. I would like to see the, some cost figures on this move. I, I, I'm kind of stuck in a time warp, back at the four-to-six million dollar budget cut. And I see a consultant being paid. I see costs of moving people. I see all of those things that have, like at La Cumbre, that get bigger and bigger and bigger. And I certainly can't support any such move if it's gonna impact my decision on the ninth-period class size reduction, or any of the other items that we have to make painful decisions about. So I wanted to get, be on record for that, and I do apologize for having to leave.
And I'd like to jump in on that point, because as we talk about the various costs, there is another cost that we haven't talked about in terms of this with the general fund, and that is by not renting out the Ortega site, we are not bringing in money.
The opportunity cost.
The opportunity cost. And so I think that as we make this decision, it would be important for us to back in the fiscal recovery plan to know what that loss of possible revenue would be, as we think about that in terms of things like cutting librarians and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Do we have any cost figures? That's what I was going to ask.
Well, no, not per se. We can get that to you very quickly. And, yes, and Mrs. Adney has money for a variety of different things, so. But what we will do is put all the costs together, and then we'll figure out if there is an impact on the general fund.
And we do have public comment on this.
So there may not be an impact on the general fund?
There, there may not be at all. Correct. So for the most part, we would most, I would imagine, use district staff to move the stuff, the classroom materials. There is a variety of categorical funds that La Cuesta currently has that we could use to modify the facility out here. And then, for the most part, those are the only two things that we had, we had really looked at.
Right, the move, and then taking out the PE equipment back there, and maybe putting in a couple of basketball hoops and some volleyball stuff.
Right. That's being cleared out. It would be the modification of what's left over.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay.
Lane Wheeler for public comment, if that's okay with everybody?
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. I want to commend the community day staff and La Cuesta for the collaboration that they've been doing and, and the impetus the teachers have brought to this effort. And I do want to make sure that before this effort moves further, that we do have some union consideration in here, because whenever I hear a staff will be riding an MTB bus and then walking back to school. Okay, great. So, but I just think there needs to be some flushing out to make sure we don't have any conflict with our current contract. So that would be my only request. Thank you.
We'll be happy to sit down and have that discussion. I would like to acknowledge the teachers who are here, and, and especially thank you for your efforts. I know that you've been, you've spent a lot of time and, and energy on planning for this kind of a thing, and I appreciate your enthusiasm for it.
And if I, I'd love to hear from one of you, if you'd like to say anything.
It's too late to say.
It's too late, I know, but short, briefly, I want to, I, we need it, we need it.
I'm Paul Cronshaw. I am known as Dr. C. at the Los Alturas site, and I'm also a veteran here. I've been in, with Los Alturas for ten years at the same site, same two classrooms. I've almost been known to put a bed in there sometimes to sleep. But in general here, I must say that, having come from different professions and knowing a lot of you and my colleagues here, it is perhaps one of the best sites I have ever been at. We've had students, I don't know how many of them over the last ten years, do you do the math on it, probably six hundred coming through that site here. And I must say that having them in that small environment, putting them in that small environment, has been a good working experience, because it takes students from Galida to Santa Barbara and puts them all in the same place, and it works. The downside of it is that there's only two of us. I would like to see more collaboration with my colleagues. I'm isolated. I feel kind of left out. I want to get together with a big group. And if you look at this, of five hundred model schools in California, we're one of four that have separate sites. All of the model schools are consolidated. And so I, I'm really excited about moving. My teaching partner, Ms. Good, is also excited, and I just hope we can have the support of moving a small babysit at a time, this is just a small project, to a new site here to continue our dream of working with these students. And they're all the same students that we have. Okay? So that's my two cents worth here. Thank you for
Thank you so much.
Listening.
Okay, we're not voting on this. We're just, is that correct? We're just waiting until, okay.
We'll bring it back to you with the other information. And we will have our meeting with, with Lane. We'll move the next, oh, I don't want to take over here, but
Go ahead.
We can move E3, E4, E5, and F1 to the next agenda. Go ahead.
One last thing. I just want to say my enthusiasm for this, and that, no, that's all right. That, I just, I think this could be potentially quite wonderful, so I'm looking forward to the next steps and seeing it again. Now, we can move. I am very disappointed, though, that we have to knock off, since I got yelled at for not having B, E4 and E5 on the, no, it's E3 and E4 on the agenda, but
I'm the one doing the suggesting that we knock tonight, so.
So, uh, yes, we keep putting it off. We'll remind somebody else that we put it off, and
I am anxious to have F1, and we don't have to do it tonight, but F1 has a lot to do with, with the codes and policies that we put in place in our annual notification, so we have to build those into the packet, so I don't want to get too late into the spring here. So we'll plan to have that one on the next agenda.
Next agenda. So we have to move to F2.
In case number 0708-51, move to approve the stipulated agreement. Second?
Sorry. Harder and Parker
Parker, right.
and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, it passes four, anyone opposed? Four-zero.
In case of 0708-50, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel. Second?
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. So we're at two-two, and so that's, I think that's our, my first time since I've been on the board. This has happened to us.
I was gonna say, there's an
It gets, uh
Tabled till we have time.
Tabled. Is that what happens?
Yes.
We, we had a feeling this might
Uh, in the case of 0708-27, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel. Second?
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's four-zero.
0708-44, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel. Second?
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it's four-zero.
0708-48, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel. Second?
Harder and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four-zero. Okay, well, we go back to the
I think Mr. Gonzalez wants to say something.
No, I see.
May I ask for a direction from the Board of the Superintendent about the status of case number 0708-50?
Gosh, Mr. Gonzalez, I think we just need to bring it back to another board meeting when we have five board members present for
Thank you.
that closed session discussion, and then we won't end up with a two-two even split.
Thank you.
We're onto consent agenda, because I'm
We are, and I will just pick up the ones that
That I pulled.
that you pulled.
Okay.
Well, we didn't approve any of those D, D2, D4, D5.
We'll, we'll do those.
I'll take care of that, yeah.
We can do that.
Um, the approval of the fundraising, this is item D2, approval of additional fundraising for 0708 for the various schools. They all use different forms, and sometimes it's obvious that it's not a food item, but sometimes when it's a food item, the form doesn't always tell you whether it's before school, after school, whether it's one of those exceptions that they get to do during the lunchtime. I think we need to start walking the walk with these items. So if we could have a uniform form that the schools fill out, because we did it one time, that has a column for when the food sale is going to take place. And I think actually, the template that DP uses may include that information. Okay, so
We can do that.
Okay, great. And then I think I pulled item D8, and that was just a question of, on your cover sheet, Mr. Trimble, you talk, you said that I believe sixty students would get the training, and on their sheet, they talk about one-day training with thirty-five students. So is that times two? Are there
Correct. Yes, there, there are two dates, separate kids, separate grades.
Thank you. Wasn't clear.
My, my apologies.
No, that's not a big deal. And then item D27 on the, the attachment sheet, it has McKinley in one place. I know it's just Monroe, but I just want to make sure that there's no confusion with the use of McKinley in one spot.
That, that would be my error.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to point out a small error in D27, D28. Both of these are scheduled for actual construction during summer '09, as indicated in the backup material, not summer '08, as indicated in my cover memo. During summer '08, we'll be doing some minor work at these sites with some lead paint on the eaves, but the major painting will be the following summer, and McKinley is the site we're painting in summer '08.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move to approve items D2, D4, D5, D8, D11, D13, and D27.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four-zero. Okay, so
Is that Ms. Cordero that's seconded?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Harder, Cordero. So coming events, anything more, board comments and correspondence? Future agenda items?
Actually, just, just one, and it has, and it may not even require a future agenda item. It may just be an item in the board brief, but some kind of report on the bathrooms at La Cumbra.
Good.
The shared bathroom situation, yeah.
And I have a future agenda item. I would like us to have an, more information about the Happy Canyon property.
Okay, as an agenda item.
As an agenda item.
And I would like a brief special meeting of the Board to approve our retirements, April 17th.
What day of the week is that?
April 17th is Thursday. So is that right?
That's right.
It's the 8th, 15th.
Oh, that's right, this, yeah, okay.
What time are you thinking?
Well, what time do you want? We need five minutes of your time.
Oh. I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine anytime, but around dinnertime, I have something. If it could be earlier, if that would be okay.
Uh, four-thirty would be good for me?
That would be great, for me. Four-thirty?
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm sorry. Where are we? Anything else? German then, right? Yeah.